We'll be cooking live in five seconds.
Good evening and welcome to the Township of Woolwich regular meeting of council on May 27th, 2025. We welcome everyone here today and those watching on YouTube. I'll start with roll call of council. I'm Mayor Chauncey, present and chairing this meeting, councillor Bryant.
Present.
Councillor Burgess.
Present.
Councillor Kado.
Present.
Councillor Grant. And councillor Schwint.
Present.
Thank you. Before we get going on agenda items, council needs to reconvene in open session, a motion to reconvene councillor Bryant, councillor Kado, all those in favor, that's carried. Last meeting, we announced that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And to wrap up this important campaign, Woolwich Counselling Services has an event at Gore Park in Elmira this Friday, May 30th. With activities for all ages, this celebration highlights the importance of supporting one another and raising awareness about mental health. You can check out their website at woolwichcounselling.org for full details on the event and learn about all the mental health services that the center provides. I'll start by acknowledging the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial and indigenous people have lived here from time immemorial. I thank the Chinautan, also called the Atawandaran, the Anishnabe and the Hodinashone people who have lived here and cared for this land and who continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora and fauna and the land that sustains us. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening? Seeing none, there are no items to come forward from closed and no public meetings. So we're going to start with, excuse me. Tonight's council business includes one presentation and several delegations. So if you're a delegate, your time limit is posted on the agenda. There will be a timer on the screen and you will hear a warning sound when you have one minute left and again when your time is up. For all those speaking to council tonight, once you are finished, you can return to your seat or virtual participants can turn off their mic and video. All are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or leave as you wish. So first we have a presentation and I want to welcome Tova Davidson, Executive Director of Sustainable Waterloo Region, who has a presentation for us. Welcome, Tova. Good to see you again.
Nice to be here. Thank you so much for having me. I'm like, ooh, timer. So nice to be here and I'm here just to do my annual update to council to let you know some of the things that we've done over the past year and actually to give you a bit of a sneak peek on the things we're working on in 2025. We recently hosted our Evening of Recognition. There we go. And as always, we love to have a slide that shows you our impacts from the year before. So we are focusing on 2024 and it's at the bottom of that year-end report that I gave to you. If you're looking for more information on our year-end report, we have a much more robust version online, a whole website dedicated to the great stories of the impacts that we made. But 2024 was also the year that we celebrated 15 years of SWR operating in Waterloo Region. So some of the impacts I love to share from our 15-year history. We've planted 36 microforests. We've had 54 unique carbon cleanse business opportunities, participants, that's businesses competing with each other for employee engagement. We've hosted and supported more than 180 organizations. We've run 230 events specifically to support those organizations, but this is the big one. We've had 1,150 volunteers over 15 years. That's 750,000 hours. And we often hear people say, how do you do so much? Because we're a staff of eight. That's how. So a big thank you to them. We also, as a team, a staff team, did 15 acts of give back to the community, one for each year of our time here in Waterloo Region. So we painted another nonprofit's new offices. We worked cleaning up gardens. We delivered food for House of Friendship. We went to major transit areas, handed out chocolates with handwritten notes to 500 people taking transit or walking in our community. We did clothing drives more and more and more, just as a way to say thank you because we couldn't do this work without the support of an incredible community behind us. We love to report on some of the impacts and this is one everybody always wants to see. The Evolve One building was an idea that came out of SWR's strategic plan in 2013. It has been operating now for six years. And as you can see, we are back to net positive status. The building had 108% of the energy used onsite, generated onsite. So that doesn't mean we're an off-grid building. We generate energy and then we return it to the grid and then we use energy from the grid to make sure that it is a reliable source of energy for the businesses operating there. And we were a little worried last year when we hit 99%, but those wildfires happily did not happen in 2024. The Impact Network program continues to be the foundation of the work that we do and the township, of course, is a proud member of that with great representation from your staff team. We have about 70 member organizations overall. And collectively, this network has committed to about 60,000 tons of greenhouse gas reductions, but has actually reduced about 83,000 tons of greenhouse gases. And people can't really get their mind around what does that mean? In this case, it's a little more than 18,500 cars off the road with their mind around. And we also started a new partnership with Explore Waterloo Region in 2024 in order to find a way to help our business events, sporting events and travel trade attract more people into the region. And this industry is seeing sustainability be a major driver, both in hotel choices, business conference choices, et cetera. So we work with Explore to actually do the carbon footprint foundations for a whole suite of organizations across the region and then to do the footprint calculations for events. And what we found is it actually has attracted a number of events already to our region. We also work with Climate Action Waterloo Region. It's the partnership between us, REEP, Green Solutions and all area municipalities. So really happy to do this work and we've launched a new campaign this year, the With You We Can campaign. We also were able to bring an inventory, so I was here not that long ago, an inventory to you sharing how the community carbon footprint was shaping up. Our baseline year is 2010. We have had a 12% reduction by 2022. It still is not on track to reach the 50% target that we set for 2030 or the 80% target by 2050. Lots of work is being done and there is now the footprint measurement as well as the action tracker that you can see online for all of the things that we said we would do in the Transform WR strategy. We also launched a new collective impacts inspired model for the whole governance of climate action because it's not just about the municipalities. We now have a community leadership team, which includes educational institutions, both school boards and post-secondary. We've got the Chamber of Commerce and BIAs there. Public health is joining equity deserving groups as well as community members with expertise. And then we have a wider management committee as well, which brings in experts in renewable energy, user expanding the work of this to be a full community scope. We also have started to spin up some of the action teams and those are groups that come together for short periods of time to get actions from the Transform WR strategy to be moving forward collaboratively. And then once they're moving, that group dissolves and we start another action team. So we can just continuously be growing more. One of the action teams is focusing on waste, which I'll talk about in a second. We also in 2024 planted 16 forests of the 36 that we've planted in the four years that we've done it. 16 were last year. About 1,800 students came out. We now have all the students come out and help plant. And I know it's a 25, 2025 item, but we just planted in John Mahood School with some support from the township. So thank you for that. It was really fun, really rainy. My shoes got very, very wet. But the trees really love to be planted in the rain and we are actually working with them to get a wild flower section added adjacent to it. We also worked with Uvaro and Boundless Accelerator to help rescale and re-educate people with business skills to sell in the clean tech industry, to do project management and sales training. About 209 participants went through. It ended at the end of last year and they're still tracking those numbers for how many have removed their career into the clean tech sector. We launched an organics program. This is a program designed to help businesses divert their organic waste, either to send it as usable food to people who need food as a food rescue element, as well as sending it to become renewable natural gas. It was done in partnership with the Circular Innovation Council as a pilot in Guelph Wellington to start and we've expanded it starting in March in 2025 into Waterloo Region. We've got a number of participating organizations. What we're finding is that these organizations are already paying for their waste to be hauled away. So they might as well pay for it to go away and become renewable natural gas being taken to a facility in St. Catherine's. And this one makes me giggle, the Eco Magic Super Tool. There was a community foundation outreach looking for organizations that wanted to create AI for good. And we said yes, as long as we could do it in a low-carbon way because the AI impact on energy can be very, very high. So we did find a way to do that and launched what we like to call EMST, but it's actually the Eco Magic Super Tool. And it is a tool that organizations, including the township, can go in and put in, this is the kind of building we have, this is the work we've already done. I need a payback of this or I need to reduce my water use or waste use. And it'll actually give you ideas of what you could do. You can ask it for payback periods. You can ask it for return on investments. You can ask for slide content to be able to bring it to your leadership team. It's all designed to help organizations and individuals know what the next step is so that they can move forward faster in their implementation in ways that are good for business. And we've also launched another, we've been busy. We've launched another program called Frameworks and this is actually designed to support the development and building industry. We know that code nationally is going to be net zero by 2030. That's the projection and the industry is not ready for what that means for the reskilling, redesigning and working collaboratively. So this program being created and run in partnership with the Grand Valley Construction Association and with an executive advisory committee made up of builders, developers, engineers, architects and building science experts to help us design what is the best way to have a building exchange, a knowledge exchange, to get them to be ready to meet this, to build these buildings better, faster and be able to meet the needs both of ICI as well as residential and accessible and affordable housing. And I just want to say back to that first slide about the number of volunteers, that this is a movement in this community. It's not just SWR. There's a whole lot of us out here, but I love this quote. So I wanted to end with it, the idea that never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Thank you.
Thank you, Tova. It's always interesting to hear all the activities that Sustainable Waterloo Region is involved with and some of the outcomes. Councillor, do you have questions? Councillor Kado and councillor Schwint.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you to the presenter. Really interested in the Frameworks program. Five years though is still quite a ways out. And so Woolwich is growing quite rapidly. There's a lot of building going on here. I'm just wondering, over the next five years, how can we motivate the building community to take more action in line with what we're going to see in that legislation?
Yeah, through the mayor to you. I think it's a great question. We definitely see that there needs to be something that makes it important. And I think the most effective way to do it is to drive market demand. We know that if people who are building buildings, whether it's their home or a business building, ask for these things, understand the business case for it, the reduction in energy use, the reduction in cost of operating, for example, then they ask for it. This industry is ready and very excited to actually build these kinds of buildings. So driving market demand is a part of it and working with them to sort of help to reframe what people think of as high-performance buildings. When you think of the Evolve One building, a lot of people think that that building would have been 30% more expensive than a regular Class A office space. And in fact, it was only between 5 and 8% more expensive than regular building. And this year will mark the last year that he will have any energy costs because he will have paid off all that initial investment. And the owner of that building will make $250,000 a year more on that building than any other building he owns because he pays no utilities. So to build that business case, I think, is the thing that we really need to do. So as a township, to be having that part of your support of your businesses, to be talking to building owners, whether that's ICI or residential, to understand that this is actually a smart decision. It's not just about what's good for the environment. It's actually really good for you.
Have, I'll get to in a second, but I have to jump in. Have, have we done, have you done, or has anyone locally done any kind of sort of public advertising or information in that regard, except at councils?
Thank you for the question. We haven't yet done that. We've just launched the program in May. So we are on our way to get this moving. We know that advocacy will be an important part of that and that could include some marketing pieces. It also ties nicely into the climate action work. Because climate action is about what do all of us need to do? And so putting those two together for some of the messaging of these buildings, these houses, business buildings are better. And there's a program that enables this sector to be ready to respond to those requests. So ask for it and they are ready to help you.
I think it's important for the people who are going to be buying the houses to hear that message. And I don't know that they're necessarily hearing it.
Yes.
Councillor Schwint.
Thanks. I'm going to go a different road, I guess, because you're doing a whole lot, bunch of different things. The organics program you mentioned, composting side of it. Is it composting material that's going down in St. Catherine's? There's that biogas and this, I'm trying to understand all the way to St. Catherine's versus a local solution.
So yes, we have actually, thank you for the question. We've worked with the local biodigester. They can't take the amount of quantity that we have. So this was the best option we had because there's so much being produced. Right now, we have 63 carts a week being picked up. So it's a fair amount and so capacity is one of the questions. It is organic material, anything that is made from plants and animals and that sort of thing. It's being taken to be anaerobic digester and becoming renewable natural gas, which is a little bit different than what's happening here. And then the remaining, as you know, is compost that can be put onto farmers' fields, et cetera.
Anyone else? I had two questions. Just to remind me, the Evolve building, is it strictly solar that they're using?
Yeah, good question. The two primary energy sources are geothermal, an open-loop geo-exchange, which is a bit unique. Most geo-exchanges are pipes that run underground, lots and lots and lots of meters, kilometers of pipes that are underground. This is an open loop because of the geological standing of where it is, which brings up through an eight-inch borehole, the water in, extracts the heating or cooling and returns it back to the aquifer, which is below the municipal aquifer. So there is a geo-exchange and then solar. Some of the solar, of course, is over the parking lot. You can't miss those. And if you could get a bird's eye view, it's also covering the roof.
Thank you. I did have another question, but I didn't write it down. I just wrote 50 by 30 and 80 by 50 and it was a question about that, but the question's gone, so.
Well, if it comes back, email me.
I will. Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
For all you do.
My pleasure.
Okay, we have four delegations this evening. First one is Jeff Thompson of Environmental on Cramp Road and Worcester Place. Welcome.
I'm here to talk about Cramp Road and Worcester Place. I've been at the end of Worcester Place for the last 25 years. We have a native plant nursery. It's been there for the last 25 years. It's now 30 years old. So Woolwich is home of the oldest Canadian native plant nursery. We have, I've been traveling and my customers have been traveling Worcester Place and Cramp Road over that time and in the last three years, there seems to have been a severe deterioration of the road. It still gets the two, the biannual grading. But when you get 10 millimeters of rain, which happens quite often now, you start, you get the potholes. And I don't know how to put it delicately, but right now, it has been, actually in the last 24 hours, it's been graded for the first time this year. And these are pictures of before it was graded. Right now, there's a ripple or washboard surface on the road. And that shouldn't happen after grading. I grew up in Northwest Territories. So the first 10 years of my life was nothing but gravel. Like I didn't see asphalt for 10 years. And I know how roads should be graded and I don't believe that's happening in this case in the last three years. And you probably recognize that a pothole is typically like a, almost a saucer. You're supposed to cut beneath that saucer each time. Otherwise, it doesn't take very long at all. It just takes one rain for those potholes to resurface. And I don't believe that's happening. And that's essentially why we've got the situation we have. It should be fine. The road should be fine after two gratings a year. But within weeks after the, after the grading, we're starting to get potholes and they become severe very quickly. And I've seen buses roaming down the road. There's a lot of, fair amount of traffic and 10 kilometers an hour on this road is too fast. It's dangerous. I'm not sure how to switch the slide. Okay, arrow. Oh, okay, there. I traveled the road with a three-quarter ton truck and the wheel is almost gone when, when it comes to some of these potholes. It is, you can't find a route around them. And it gets very severe when it meets Shant Station. It's, it's almost a foot and a half deep. Like the vehicle goes down and then climbs back out again. So yeah, it just, it's going to need a little bit more attention than where you've shown it or someone's going to need to actually effectively grade it on twice a year. So I'm open.
Okay, any questions? Okay, councillor Kado.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you to the delegate. About how long of a stretch of road is this?
This, this road is probably about three kilometers, Cramp. And then there's probably a kilometer and a half of Worcester Place.
And would you say the entire length is like the pictures that we're seeing?
The entire length. It is, it rattles your bones.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the delegation? Councillor Burgess.
Do you, Mayor Chauncey, just quickly, sorry to clarify your first comment. This has just been in the last year or two, you said, but prior to that, we've been pretty good on maintenance?
Yeah, for 25 years, I've been down there. And it's just in the last three years that this problem has surfaced.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I think we've got a couple of questions for staff, but you can have a seat again and listen. You probably want Jared. Okay, councillor Brian.
Thank you. Through you to Deanne. I have a question. Do we know if the developer of Hopewell Crossing is using this for his construction traffic? I know they're not supposed to be, but are the gravel trucks and the large vehicles running this road? Do you know?
Sorry, I don't know this. I don't know if anyone's seen them.
Just concerned they may be causing some of the wear and tear on this road.
Mr. Poupay, do you know?
Through you, Mayor Chauncey, councillor Bryant. So I don't know. Something we can certainly look at with Deanne's staff for sure. There's no question that there's been some increased traffic out there with the development going on. That's a fact. I think it's, it's also a fact, like there's, I believe there's a number of things at play. I don't think it's one root cause. I do not believe that it's our operators not doing a good job. I think we have, and Mayor Chaunce will remember this. We transitioned out of some longtime Grader operators. Some, some new operators came on board, but that was a number of years ago. We have very qualified operators. They do an excellent job. I think what they're into is there's no material left on the road. Those pictures were indication that there's no gravel there. You're pushing sand around and you can't cut a pothole out when there's no material to move around. So we're, that's, that's a bigger problem. I think that is an underfunding of our entire gravel program and that comes over year over year when we have reporting that says we should be spending about 1.2 million on our 123-odd centerline kilometer system and we're only spending about 400,000. So I think that is just catching up and everything wears out. So everything needs to be rejuvenated. Gravel roads don't last forever unless they're treated properly. So I would say that's long history and that's partly what we're seeing here. I think weather does play a role in it, traffic and, and the funding. I think there's a number of pieces there. We did just grade it out. I believe it was just either yesterday or today. But just so that council is aware, we prioritize our gravel grading in the spring. We started up in the north slash west side of town and we follow along with our priority snow plowing route. So this is the last stretch of road. We have a number of areas obviously that we get complaints for. This year, I didn't hear any complaints from Scotch Line or Weeby Place. We got to those, I guess, in time. Weather played a role on when we can get on our roads. We were probably two and a half weeks behind now. So again, a whole lot of factors, but I don't, I don't want to put blame on, on, on an operator issue in this case. I wouldn't say that at all.
Councillor Burgess and then councillor Grant.
Do you, Mayor Chauncey, just to touch on what you said there, Jared, that we're lacking the material on the road right now. So are we going to have this? So are we gonna have this kind of same ongoing issue year over year then, assuming we have similar weather? Or is it something we should be looking at for the budget to get some more money to fix that?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Burgess. So it would have been in a previous council that we had a concerted effort to look to convert roads, and the reporting was to deal with roadways that are south of Highway Seven. That's a long way for our graders to go. We don't float them there. They have to drive there. It's a long time. Our graders, we have a 2009 grader and a 2014 grader. So that's wear and tear on a grader. They work a lot in the winter nowadays. They didn't used to work as much in the winter, too. So we are seeing more wear and tear on our graders. So again, that's a long way to go. I think gravel roads are a very complex road network, and they're very labor-intensive and expensive. So we think from a staff perspective, the smart money would be to look to try to convert those roads to hard top of some form, whether it be surface treat or asphalt. Cramp Road from Greenhouse all the way to Sean Station is in our development charges background study with varying degrees of DCs, not 100% funded by DC. So there is levy dollars needing to be applied to the various sections. But that's something that is identified in the bylaw, anywhere between 2027 to 2033. And that's really dependent on how the development occurs and the speed for which it occurs. So I would say inherently, yes, we need to spend more money in our gravel system. But there are other ways that we could manage some of these challenges. And certainly, anything south of Seven, we still strongly believe there's not a large horse and buggy contingent down there. That makes converting to surface treat more palatable, fairly cost-effective. So that would be some good use of funding, too, if we could look to convert some of those roads down there. And we have started. There's, we've done Fife and Lurch and Vance and some of the roads down there in Guelph Town Line. So we're looking for some of the other roads to do.
Councilor Grant?
I'm just saying that part of the issue is that there's not a lot of gravel base there now to move around when we're grading. Have we looked at increasing the gravel base there? I know that we have a tender in the agenda later tonight, and we're putting some gravel on Greenhouse Road, which is close to Cramp. I'm just wondering if there is maybe value and merit in getting some gravel onto that road to help mitigate some of the issues we're seeing with the post-grading.
Through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Grant. Yes, it's just interesting timing that we do have the tender award report on this evening. This section of Cramp is not identified. It is identified next year. We typically look at geography when we do it. I know we're in close proximity, but there is a line. I did speak to operations today. We recommend, from a staff perspective, that we do not spend more money in our gravel program. We do not have enough in the surplus anyway to cover the amount of, that would be required on Cramp. You're probably about $100,000 to do Cramp and Worcester at today's dollar. So again, don't know what that is going to look like next year, but it will be included in next year's tender. So that's the recommendation from staff, but certainly council can debate that.
Councilor Schwint?
Thanks. Yeah, gravel roads, we always get complaints every year. I think it rotates which road it is, regardless of how much gravel's there. Example, I used a Cedar Spring in my neck of the woods. Resurfaced last year with gravel, and it was awful this spring. Unfortunately, it was a late spring, and the graders couldn't get out. And that's why it seemed to take longer. So I'm curious from source to source of how many weeks or days do you need to go through the entire network to do it, get done properly, so that we can have a better response to residents? And then, I guess I'd be number one.
Through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Schwint. So I will get an exact number, but it's certainly well over a month. I'm gonna say it's, you're at least five or six weeks probably to get around the town for your spring grading. I noticed that we did get out early April, it looks like. Then it was spotty, and again, weather hits that, so it starts, stops. And that's the challenge. The other challenge, obviously, becomes, and we look to deal with geography. So if we're in a neck of the woods, but we have complaints down the south, it's not efficient use of time to all of a sudden stop and go down where that complaint is. So we tend to stay focused. So I think that's an important message as well for residents, that we will get there. But we just have a logical order to work around. And so I think there is some messaging, Councilor Schwint, that we could do better on to get out to the public and let them know. And obviously, we have a lot of longtime residents, too, that have been on some of these gravel roads and seen things year over year, too. But there are, you know, new people. And in this case, it's definitely new traffic using this road. We've heard complaints.
Okay, six weeks of working time. That's good to know for us, council, on the public. And secondly, are we using as much overtime as possible in that six-week stretch to get it done?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Schwint. So again, overtime is not a mandatory. There are, our grader operators work hard in the season. So certainly, when the gravel resurfacing comes in, there's a short time window. I think we're getting around our gravel program. Like, it used to take us a lot longer. We're far more efficient than we have been in the past. I'm not sure if we're around a week to do the gravel resurfacing, but I think it's really important to note, and you mentioned, excuse me, Cedar Springs, we are still putting far too little gravel when we're doing. Even though we're doing a resurfacing, we're far too little in the amount. And that's where we're seeing that. When we put it down, not long after, we're still having challenges, right? So I think that's the real change that needs to happen when we do do a resurface. We need to spend the money and the time to do, to place more gravel down and last, so it'll last longer. I think there's a few things on that.
Anyone else? Okay. Delegation's already left, so thanks. Good discussion. Next is a request for drop curb, six Charles Street, and I'll welcome Laura and Jason Colwell. Start when you're ready and just press the green button.
I want to thank you for having us. My name is Laura Colwell. This is Jason. We have been residents in Elmira for a little over twelve years now. And the town did an amazing job at the construction at George and High Street last year. And the roads are beautiful. The only problem is it has affected the mobility, accessibility to our home, and that's why we're here today. So Jason and I have actually spent hours trying to understand why our request, we have requested to have a drop curb, if you look at the slide, around that, where the yellow circle is, to have that put back in place. That's exactly how it was pre-construction. And Jared, I feel like I owe you an apology or a thank you for your patience in dealing with me, because I have been like a dog with a bone, just like drilling him with questions, like, how come this property is allowed to have it and we're not? And like, everything, I've gone through the whole town of Elmira and found almost every single property that has, and you'll see them at the end of the slideshow, that has a drop curb at the end of their walkway. So in that, Jared and Ian have been very professional and patient with me. So thank you for that, Jared. I am not, I'm typically not a difficult person, but I do feel like I've really, you know, pushed you to the limits on this one. That being said, we have requested a number of times to get the actual bylaws that the town has surrounding this. Like, what are the actual rules and regulations when it comes to having a walkway in order to have a drop curb? And it wasn't really provided to us. I've looked online, too. I've searched the internet and found different bylaws. And in finding that, I found some homes in our area that are actually breaking bylaws. And I'm like, well, they're breaking bylaws, and there's not even a bylaw that I feel like we're breaking. So it's a little bit confusing, I guess, and frustrating, and it feels a little bit unfair for us. So when I didn't get those answers, my next question was, well, just explain to me how it's safer to have a curb at the end of our walkway for anybody? Like, a curb, obviously, you have to step up to. So how is it safer to have a curb at the end of the walkway rather than a gentle slope? And that, I didn't feel like we got an answer to either. So when all was said and done, it was basically, I came to the conclusion, there was no budging in this area. We were not going to get what we asked for. So I contacted the Human Rights Commission and spoke with a lawyer there, and they felt that we have a just case to go ahead and start filing a motion. In saying that, she said it is a long process. It takes two years. And honestly, I was talking to my friend, and I said, I don't really have the energy to do that. Like, I'm tired of fighting. I just, I just don't understand. And she said, why don't you contact your counselor? Well, what's my counselor gonna do? She said, that's exactly what they're there for, to help for things like that. So that's why we're here today. And I'm hoping that you'll see where we're coming from and understand that we really aren't trying to be difficult. We're just trying to maintain the safest walkway possible for our daughter. So we did, like I said, we purchased the walkway twelve years ago. This guy's actually a ruler-stickler. So if it was us that designed the walkway, it would be exactly as Jared wanted. Like, if he said it has to be, you know, a figure eight, and Jason would do it, because he doesn't like to break the rules or get in trouble. Unfortunately, it was the previous homeowners that actually designed it. And we're kind of in a, in a spot where it's unfortunate. And I don't think we would even, if our daughter hadn't been diagnosed with epilepsy and functional neurological disorder ten years ago, I don't even think we would have noticed that there was a curb, except there had, like, I don't think we would have cared. But because of her, then it does create significant concern for us. So from my standpoint, the reality is the walkway meets the road. So the question becomes, what is the safest thing at the end of the road? Is it a curb or a gentle slope? So in my opinion, it's a gentle slope. Whether you're in a wheelchair, or you have mobility issues, or you're able-bodied, you have a step, you have to go up above. So as a mother, it frightens me to think about my daughter being in the wheelchair. I'm gonna try not, sorry, to get emotional here. So this is what we have agreed to with the town, where, if you can see where the pink is, having them pour new concrete to match ours. And so as a mother, imagining my daughter going down the curb and say she's in her wheelchair and has a seizure when she gets closer to the end of the curb. If she were to lose control of her wheelchair, bravity is going to pull the wheelchair to the road. Having a curb there just scares me at the thought of her possibly going over the curb while she's having a seizure in the wheelchair. It actually terrifies me to think of that. So that is where my heart and my concern is coming from. So we have reluctantly agreed to this just for a couple of reasons. We've been informed by staff and construction crews that they can't guarantee that the new construction will match. Am I almost out of time here? I only have fifteen seconds left. So, yeah, that is our thing. It's not gonna match. We passed a
It's okay. You can summarize.
Oh, okay. So we just passed a sheet around. Our big concern is that the, because there's already, to the left of that, you can see there's a white concrete strip. And then there's the red driveway. And then now, if we alter the walkway to look like this, if it doesn't match, it's gonna kind of look like a hack job. And then it's going to decrease the property value as well as not be safe. And we're just asking where that yellow line is, that we can get that portion cut or drop curb like we had when we bought the home twelve years ago. Sorry for going over.
That's okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Councilor Burgess?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Sean, to the delegates. Thanks for coming out, and thanks for the time you've put into this and the presentation. And yeah, just hearing your thoughts and the time working with staff there. I recognize staff doesn't want to be cutting curbs everywhere, but given, as you've explained today, that there's the accessibility needs, and that you've already had this for many years, and how it can help you guys and how you bought the house, I think it's a simple way staff and council can support you guys. Just clarity on that, though, the slide you had there. If you had an option, do you want it exactly how it originally was with the grass coming down? Or do you want the new kind of pink section you drew out there along with the drop curb?
What do you, this is my feeling. You can answer if you've got a different feeling. I don't actually really care if the pink thing is there. Like, if you, because it's not altering the walkway. They can get as close as they can, that's fine. My real issue is just that there is a drop curb from the driveway over to the walkway should my daughter lose control. If council thinks that that part to the driveway should be there, then I'll go with that. If you prefer the walkway just to the road, like, I'm not too concerned about that. I'm more concerned about the safety issue. What's your thought?
Yeah, the walkway is the most important part to the, that meets the street for us.
Can I just break protocol and ask Jared to follow up on that quick? Does it affect sloping at all if we're doing the drop curb, the hallway plus the pink section? Like, you can match that all, or is it easier just to do the walkway? Like, do you have a preference if council were to support the drop curb? Putting it back to grass or keeping the pink and all that? I just know the sloping and the
Through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Burgess, just to answer the question. If the walkway was to continue and a drop curb was to be installed, it would be, in my opinion, moot to add any connection to the driveway. It would be the walkway back in. Just to answer the question directly.
Other questions? No. Okay, thank you. Counselor Kado, then Councilor Burgess?
Thanks. This question's probably for Jared. We had quite a discussion around this street quite a while ago when this council decided to not put any sidewalks in. If we had have put a sidewalk in, would it have been on that side of the road? And would that have prevented any of this from being an issue?
Through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Kado. Yes, it was on this side. That's, would have solved this problem. Your accessibility goes away. All the walkways tie in. I think it's important to note, there are two other locations with walkways that tie into the back of curb in this street, one right behind the Colwells and one on George Street as well. Those walkways discharge from their property to the tall curb. There is no connection to the walkway. So we're going, we're to the driveway, sorry. So we're going above and beyond. And just so we appreciate grade, this falls very fast down to a road where we're potentially having somebody discharge right onto a live lane of traffic as opposed to an appropriate driveway entrance where people would expect to come out. It's not perfect, appreciate, but absolutely having sidewalk in there would have solved all of the accessibility and safety concerns 100%.
Councilor Burgess? Go ahead and then Kayla.
Just gonna make a motion, so if Kayla wants to chat about it first.
Councilor Grant?
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify, so staff has agreed to put in an additional kind of pathway from the walkway to the driveway. I'm just wondering about the cost difference that, for us to cut versus us to put in a pathway.
Through you, Mayor Sean, to Councilor Grant. So it would be more costly to do the right thing. I think what's important for council to understand here is that there will be lots of instances of non-compliance throughout the township. We appreciate that. Very little of the ones that were provided in this, some of these were not with curb and gutter. So some of the pieces provided in the delegates' material aren't an apples to apples. I think what's important for council to understand, if we come across a non-compliance through a large capital program such as Reconstruction, that's when we have the ability to correct the problem. This is a safety concern. That's why staff were not bending on this. That's exactly what it was. So to us, we felt that having the large capital program afforded us the ability to do the right thing. And the right thing was to connect the walkway. So it wasn't something that we wouldn't do for anybody else in a similar situation. I don't think there was anything over and above, and appreciate the Colwells, you know, stating that staff were professional. There was a lot of time and energy spent, a lot of different looks at this. And, but I think that's exactly what the township is able to do through a larger capital program, is try to make it right. So we feel that in the absence of a sidewalk, it is not appropriate to cut the curb to have a walkway discharge onto a live lane of traffic. And therefore, we've come up with a solution that we feel solves all the problems. I did hear tonight, for the first time, though, the concern about coming down the walkway and not being able to make the turn. I mean, that could be handled by disconnecting the walkway to the back of the curb, too, and just having grass there offline about. We were open to that. But if they wanted to have it connected But if they wanted to have it connected to the top of the curb, that's exactly how two other properties in the same neighborhood. And nobody asked them if they want to drop curb or not. It just wasn't a conversation. So I think we should keep that in mind. It's the precedent there. That if this was allowed for this one, how would the other two handle that now? Are we going around cutting curb for everybody and allowing people to discharge directly onto a live lane of traffic? Again, I, staff feel that's inappropriate, but that's council's decision.
Thank you for that. That's good context.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Kado.
Thanks, Mayor. Through you back to Jared. Uh, I appreciate that sentiment, uh, but I think that this is a unique case in that there is some mobility issues. So, um, I think that the fact that there's no sidewalks in there was council's decision. So we created an AODA problem and I think that it's our impetus to correct that. And so I was ready to make a motion, but if Counselor Burgess has one ready, I'm willing to hear that and consider seconding it.
Counselor Burgess.
Yeah, I'll just make the motion that the council of the township of Woolwich directs staff to install a drop curb at the end of the walkway for six Charles Street, Almyra. And then again, that has proper sloping to the best of ability, matching the existing walkway material.
Counselor Kado.
I would second that, but can we add some very simple language about the unique situation um, that was presented in front of us today? I don't know if uh, the clerk can assist with that briefly. I'm just mindful of precedents that we're setting here.
Words of wisdom from the clerk?
I understand we're one offs, but me, we're the council for the local community. And in this situation, it's not a perfect thing. We could have had sidewalks, but that was going to impact the entire um, roadway and community. Um, putting this walkway in is the best safety can um, solution that the residents feel. Staff have a difference of opinion which is safer. It's not up to me to decide who's right or wrong or the way it is. I'm on the side of the resident because they have to live with it. So when the neighbor comes, if they can provide justification, why aren't we helping our residents? I just don't see a downside to helping out in this case.
Do you like the wording that uh, Clerk Smith has come up with there? Unique mobility challenges?
I would, sorry to interject, but I would, I would think maybe some like unique mobility challenges or accessibility challenges that was presented to coun- council.
Accessibility as opposed to mobility? Okay.
That's fine with me if it's fine with Counselor Burgess.
Okay, further discussion, Counselor Burgess.
I guess just to clarify the motion, so this will just be the walkway. After talking to residents and staff, just the walkway, we're not gonna do the extra section there. Um, if that's good with everyone.
See the residents nodding too soon. Okay, uh, motion on the floor, all those in favor? That's carried. You, you can stay if you'd like and take in all the fun or. You're welcome. Uh, Brezlo staging and growth interim control bylaw. Before we hear our final delegate, I'll ask Director of Development Services, Deanne Priest, to present the staff report.
So real quick, um, staff are currently, as council know, uh, working on staging of development for St. Jacobs and Almyra. In Brezlo, there is a significantly more uh, land that was added to the settlement area, which uh, essentially quadrupled the size of the Brezlo built up area. Therefore, the need for the staging of development plan and the study uh, for Brezlo is a lot more extensive than uh, what was in St. or what we've done in St. Jacobs and Almyra. Uh, in order to allow staff to uh, complete this study in a comprehensive way, looking at the infrastructure needs, the financial planning for the long-term growth of that area, uh, staff are recommending an interim control bylaw. This essentially will be a tool that's uh, available under the Planning Act to municipalities to allow us to freeze development so that we can conduct this study for this comprehensive uh, staging and development review. Uh, we're proposing a uh, or an interim control bylaw can be in place for one year. If um, there is an extension that is needed for that, we would have to come back to council. So it is not an indefinite amount of time. It will be for one year or less if council, if uh, staff come back to council to release the interim control bylaw earlier if the study is complete. This will not develop, uh, delay development. We'll be continuing to develop a significant amount of housing in Brezlo, um, aligning with the provincial directions for housing. Um, with over 2,000 units already in draft approved plans of subdivision that will not be subject to the interim control bylaw and will be able to um, continue and go ahead. Um, and also this will allow us to dedicate staff time to completing the study uh, through a comprehensive process that will include public consultation. Um, and also consultation with the development community and we plan to initiate the study uh, immediately and come back to council very quickly.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Priest? Okay, I'm not seeing any, then I will call on the delegate, Grace O'Brien of Cache Homes. I'm assuming she's online.
I am. Good evening, members of council and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I'll endeavor to be efficient and not delay you from getting to the Oilers game. But of course, uh, this is a very important matter to my client. And so my, my name's Grace O'Brien and I'm a lawyer with Davies Howe. Uh, we represent Cache Homes Victoria. Cache owns lands in Brezlo at 2590 Victoria Street North, which are just east of Greenhouse Road and north of Victoria Street. Um, you can find a map of these lands at the end of our written submissions, which were included in the revised agenda today and supplement my delegation. So on behalf of Cache, we're asking you to refuse the recommendation to enact the proposed interim control bylaw for three main reasons. So the first reason is that it hasn't been demonstrated that the interim control bylaw is needed for it to complete its staging study for Brezlo. While the township's concern that growth in Brezlo should be staged may be valid, it's important to know that interim control bylaws are extraordinary measures. They restrict a landowner's rights substantially and are to be used sparingly. It must be demonstrated that they are needed for the township to deal with unforeseen issues. For example, when existing zoning permits development that may be problematic for the township, an interim control bylaw could be passed to prevent the problematic development from occurring as of right. In this case, it has not been demonstrated why an interim control bylaw must be in effect for the township to finish its staging studies, which it started in 2023 as part of its official plan review. And it's my understanding that they're currently ongoing. If a developer wished to pursue residential development in those areas in Brezlo, they're already required to demonstrate that the lands can be serviced before development proceeds as part of the typical application process. If this cannot be demonstrated by the proponent, the township is entitled under the Planning Act to refuse the applications. This is a typical process and there's no need for an interim control bylaw to facilitate it. Because interim control bylaws significantly impact a property owner's development rights and are not subject to the same procedural fairness, background studies and public process as typical zoning bylaws, it's even more important that they are implemented with extreme caution and only when it's demonstrated that they are needed. So the next reason and potentially the most important is that passing the interim control bylaw will freeze residential development in those specified areas in Brezlo for an indefinite period of time. And you heard that the interim control bylaw expires after one year and then the township would have to get council approval to extend it for another two years. But if after the staging study is complete, the township chooses to pass a new zoning bylaw to implement the staging policies and that zoning bylaw gets appealed, under the Planning Act, the interim control bylaw remains in effect. So this means that the interim control bylaw may be in effect on our clients' lands indefinitely, only for longer than three years. So this is particularly troubling to my client when there's a housing crisis and the province has set out a clear mandate to build more homes faster. And when Cache has submitted development applications to the township in April to facilitate a residential development on its lands. The proposed development would provide the township with additional residential units in various housing forms and types, including single detached homes, townhouses and apartment units. Given the timing of the interim control bylaw, Cache has serious concerns that it is being passed primarily to frustrate its development, which is not a valid or appropriate planning rationale to pass a bylaw and it's not an appropriate use of a municipality's powers under the Planning Act. Cache's application is supported by over 15 reports and studies prepared by well-known professional consultants and includes a detailed report which reviews the township's proposed staging policies and presents a solution as to how the lands may be surfaced in a timely manner. The residential applications are well thought out and precisely what the province is directing municipalities to provide. More housing in settlement areas. Should the interim control bylaw be passed, it will not only delay Cache's proposed application indefinitely, but all unallocated residential development in the study area. This is prejudicial to our client and not consistent with provincial policy. So the third and final reason is that there are multiple less onerous mechanisms to phase development in Brezlo that do not require this extraordinary measure. If the township wishes to restrict development until it has completed these staging studies, it can subject development approvals to holding provisions or draft plan conditions of approval or other mechanisms. There's no reason to refuse to review development applications and significantly slow down residential development in the community for years to come. It's like bringing a gun to a fistfight. The township is proposing a drastic measure to completely freeze development when there are other less onerous and less drastic ways to achieve its objectives. So for all of those reasons, we've requested council refuse to enact the interim control bylaw and thank you for your time.
You, you do have a minute left.
Oh, well, no, I was wrapping up. So subject to any questions council or staff may have, those are, those are my submissions and thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. Do you have any questions? I do have a question for you. Um, do, do you? So, so when you're working in a community, uh, such as Brezlo, do you have um, sort of an ideal rate of growth for a community or is it just um, as fast as possible?
Uh, that, that would be a good question for the planner, but the province does set out um, targeted rates of growth and it's dependent on um, different communities. Cause it would be on the understanding that um, Woolwich is a more rural municipality and it wouldn't be expected to have the same amounts of growth as say Toronto or um, bigger municipalities. Um, the thing with uh, applications is that the township staff get to review them. So if they're submitted and they think that it's too much growth or if it doesn't conform with the official plan, which sets out potential densities that it wants on the lands, um, then it can provide comments on the applications and the developers can either revise the applications to reflect that or they come to a disagreement and the township might refuse the applications. And I guess the, the issue with the interim control bylaw is that it doesn't let this process happen in a timely manner. It would freeze the process, especially for Cache for a year and potentially three years and then maybe even more if the zoning bylaws under appeal. So we don't get this back and forth collaborative process to try to get the best development possible on the lands for all involved.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Grant.
Thank you. Through you to the delegate. I guess my concern is if we are still in the process of going through our staging plan, how would Cache expect our staff to accurately provide feedback on applications that you're providing if we haven't even had the chance to review the growth that we're looking to put in there. I think it, it just feels a little bit of carpe for the horse that you would like to ha- like this, like to have the opportunity for staff to provide feedback on your application when they may not yet have a full some idea of what it is we're looking to do. That's, that's kind of where my, my concern is.
Thank you for your question and yeah, I, I understand your concern, but I guess it's just that's the regular process of applications. Like there's often new policy and new um, analysis is coming through and it's up to the township and the developer to work together and try to come up with some sort of um, estimate or study that determines um, where they're at with growth. And in Cache's case, um, they provided a lot of supporting studies by economists, engineers, many different people who they actually believe will help the township, um, develop their studies and determine where they're at with growth in the neighborhood or in the community. Um, and it's just part of that collaborative process. And I think that the developers would be understanding if the township just doesn't know where they're at and would be um, potentially accepting of some sort of, you could put a holding provision on the zoning saying that um, we're not going to give you building permits until it's demonstrated that there's enough infrastructure to service your development. And then you can't get building permits until the township confirms that that's the case. And that's often done and doesn't need an interim control bylaw to facilitate that.
Thank you. Appreciating that, just, I also know that we've had significant time constraints put on staff from the province for the ability to review applications. So I, again, just worry about why we may be doing this in the spirit of collaboration. There is a time crunch that does directly impact the workload of staff and I'm thinking of, we're also trying to do these studies where we're also trying to weigh the, the time commitment that takes for reviewing these applications. So I, I, I see where you're coming out with the collaboration. I just, it, we're in a rock and a hard spot, so to speak, courtesy of the province. Um, so that's just kind of where my concerns lay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you for your time.
So if I go back to the report, uh, there is a recommendation on the report moved by Counselor Bryant, seconded by Counselor Kado. Is there any discussion on it? Counselor Kado.
Perhaps a question at the end, um, I think that my vote's gonna be related to just the rate of growth that we're seeing in Brezlo already. I think that uh, you know, when I voted against the expansion originally, it was because uh, I, I wanted to limit the rate at which that would grow so that it can grow right, not just fast. And so I still have some concerns um, about our phasing approach, but I think that that is the best way forward. Um, and so I just, I can't support um, anything but an accepting of this recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I, I would add that there are um, over 2,000 units in draft approval and if you multiply that by the approximate number of, of people per unit, that is um, more than 50% increase in the population already sitting there uh, waiting to go. So while if, if someone from the city is listening in and, and thinks that you know, 2,000 units isn't very much, um, I'll, I'll reiterate that. That would be like taking, I don't know, what's the population of Kitchener, 300 and? 234? Okay, so that would be taking the population of, of Kitchener at 234,000 and making it probably 350,000. So, you know, I, I, I think that um, anyone who's, who's listening or looking at this later, uh, this isn't about stalling development. This isn't about you know, making uh, well, it's not about stalling development. It's about making good decisions about where development goes and allow that plan so that we can move forward. And there's still, there's still lots of units there that are ready. with developers waiting to be built. So I'll call a question. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks. Thanks for letting me go on a bit, even though I'm in the chair. We have a consent, consent items. Does anyone want to push, pull anything from the consent agenda? No mover and a seconder then? Councilor Kado, Councilor Bryant, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We have gravel tender award. Now call on Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupay.
Thank you, Mayor Shonton. Through you to members of council, happy to present the tender award for our gravel resurfacing program this year. Shocking to some who've been around, the recommendation is to Joker Limited for the, the amount of fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents per tone after HST rebate. Why I say shocking, because Joker has typically been our provider for, I believe, as long as I've been here, at least twelve years that I'm aware of. So very familiar with Joker Limited. I think it's a great working relationship. Oftentimes, they have been the only bidder. I think something that is worth pointing out to council is they were not the only bidder this year. If you look at the summary report, I think what's important to highlight here is the cost spread. And council be aware that the last couple of tender awards that the department has presented, we've had a very tight spread, usually between one and fourth. This last couple of years, we were anywhere between ten and five percent this past year. So this is a huge spread between first and second. That's important to note. So it's precarious in some ways because whatever this is, some of the pricing that we're seeing in, in past years, we haven't had other, other bidders. So anyway, something just should point out to, to, to council. And the, the list of roads that we're proposing to do this year is contained in there, and it's going to include Weisenberg, Lundie, Holm, Durant, Maple Bend, Greenhouse, Woolwich Guelph Town Line. And then next year, I can assure you that Cramp Road will be on, on the list for roads there in the geography of the locale, but we're just working our way logically through, through the program. So again, I think it's important. I do appreciate that we provide pricing since 2018. You can kind of see a historical look. Last year was, and, and even 2023 was fairly high, and you can see that, you know, it's generally trucking that is the higher cost here and proximity to the pit. So we're close proximity again to the pit. That helps with the trucking costs. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions council may have.
Questions? Someone want to move the recommendation? Councilor Burgess, Councilor Schwint, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. North sanitary pumping station debt authorization. Director of Finance, Colm Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor Shonton. Through you to council. So this is a late addition to the report. So the region issues the debt on behalf of the township, and they're looking to do a spring debt issue. So we have two projects that we're going to be including in the spring debt issue. The first one is the Breslau Drain Project. So previously, council were aware that that was internally borrowed funds. So we're converting that essentially to an external debenture, and that was already previously approved by council in a previous staff report. The second project that we're looking to issue the debt for is the North Sanitary Pumping Station. Again, this isn't new debt. This was previously approved in 2023 and 2024. But unlike the Breslau Drain Project, there wasn't a specific council resolution authorizing the debt. Best practice is to include a specific resolution authorizing the debt as part of the budget approval package. And one of the issues here is because it's, because it's been approved over two different budget years, the total amount for the project was one, one million dollars, essentially one million dollars in 2023, and then eight hundred and ten thousand in 2024. Again, we've talked about how we, we budget in one year, and then we carry over the unspent amount into the second budget year. So the, the total cost, if you look at the budget, looks like one point eight million dollars, and that's not what we're looking for, for the debt. What we're looking for is essentially what's laid out in the staff report. It's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand in 2023 and eight hundred and twenty-three thousand in 2024, a total of one point one million six, one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. So what we need essentially is a council authorization approving this debt, which was already approved in the budget. This is rate-supported debt, so it will be paid back through utility rates, just so we have the formal authorization to approve this debt and for the region.
So a bit of a housekeeping motion, is it?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilor Kado? Councilor Schwint, all those, sorry, question?
Sorry, has the work been done?
Through you, Mayor Shonton. Yes, the, the work is finished. That's why we're ready to go for the debt. So we internally financed it, and this is essentially the, the debt.
Well, will that, will that affect some of the discussion we've had on reserves?
I don't believe so. The way we normally budget for these debt payments is we, we include it in the operating budget in future years. Ideally, you would have a multi-year budget, and you could see the future year impacts of any debt, but we haven't necessarily done that. So it would be included in the 2026 budget, would include an amount for the debt repayment related to this north sanitary pumping station on the utility rates.
So it was internally borrowed?
The, the cash was internally borrowed for this, but now to repay this debt, we would need to have the repayments. So I don't know the exact interest rate, but essentially it would be about a hundred thousand dollars a year that we would need to build into future capital budgets in order to repay this, this debt.
Yeah, I understand that piece, but. Councilor Schwint?
I think, Mayor Shonton, you're asking the actual reserves, so issuing one point one million dollars to ventures. Does that increase our reserves because there's cash going back in them, not internally borrowed funds?
I think, I think I see the question you're asking, Councilor Schwint. So that would be the way I would record this, but I don't think that's the way this project was recorded. I think it was kind of off the books kind of thing. It wasn't essentially taken from reserves. It was taken from our cash balances, our kind of operating cash balances. So I haven't reflected this kind of internal borrowing in the reserves because I wasn't honestly aware of, of this previously.
Okay, we'll, we'll get some clarity as we go through budget, I'm sure. Did you want to second the motion? Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks. Okay, we have a motion for the bylaws listed on the agenda. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Councilor Burgess, seconded by Councilor Bryant. All those in favor? That is carried. And that concludes the council portion of the meeting. We'll take a quick five-minute recess and be back to start committee of the whole with Councilor Bryant chairing. Five minutes.
We'll be going live in five seconds.
Good evening. We're now meeting as committee of the whole for items that require more debate and discussion. We will not be making final decisions on these items, but proposing recommendations for the next committee, for the next council meeting. If anyone in the community has feedback on these recommendations, we encourage you to reach out to staff or submit comments to council before a final decision is made at the next meeting. So the first report we will be dealing with is our treasurer's statement, Development Charges 2024. So we will turn to Director Colm Lynn.
Thank you, Chair Bryant, and through you to council. So this is the, the second time you're seeing this report. You may have a little bit of deja vu. I previously presented this report on April first, 2025. But after submitting this report, it's, I, it was brought to my attention, or I discovered that there was a number of items that weren't included in the treasurer's statement that should have been included. Most notably, the DC credits that was brought to my attention after I had submitted this report. And so DC credits are essentially, I, I consider them as a kind of financing. So essentially developers build infrastructure on our behalf, and we provide DC credits, which are essentially offset by future development charges. So any future DC revenue we collect, they'll go against these DC credits essentially. So where they essentially did the work on our behalf, and we didn't have those reported in the original treasurer's report. So there, this is related to the Ottawa Street Reconstruction or the Ottawa Street Extension. And there's a total of one point three million dollars in DC credits for that project. And of that, five hundred and ninety-four thousand was owed essentially at the end of 2024. So that's the main item that I needed to revise the DC treasurer's statement to incorporate any of the DC credits, and that's required under the Development Charges Act and the regulations. And the second item that wasn't included, as I kind of went through in a little bit more detail, is the DC Act requires any internal borrowing from any individual service or any individual reserve. And so we do have a number of DCs that are, or DC reserves that are in a deficit situation. That includes the water and the wastewater and the bylaw reserve. So essentially what we're doing is inter-fund borrowing from, I'm, I'm choosing the Rhodes DCs. It's the one with, that has adequate funding. So we're essentially borrowing any deficits in the water, wastewater, and bylaw development charge reserves against the Rhodes DCs. So essentially they're offsetting against each other, and that wasn't previously outlined in the DC treasurer's report. So I think it was attachment two. I just show the, kind of the reconciliation, the in and out. Essentially, we're borrowing that funding from the Rhodes DC and showing the revised balance for that. So those were the major changes. And again, this is just for council's information, but also for the public record. Just for council's information, there's other requirements that are included as well. There's been a number of changes in legislation over the last few years. So we want to make sure in future years that we're going to be incorporating some of these changes. One of them is to ensure that at least sixty percent of any DCs collected are attributed to capital projects. We don't really have that issue currently, especially because a significant amount of the Rhodes DC is allocated to water and wastewater, this internal borrowing. But as we collect DCs, we're going to have to do a little bit more work on the reconciliation between the development charges collected and making sure that they're attributed. And there's future legislation potentially changing the layout and the format of this treasurer's statement because it's not very consistent across the province. So the most recent legislation has proposed a number of changes for this report in future years. So it's just for information, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council. Do we have any questions? Nope, seeing none. You have a recommendation before you. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Councilor Kado, Councilor Burgess? Any other questioning? None? All in favor? And that would be carried. Okay, then we move on. Our next report is F1125, 2024, year-end quarter four financial report. Mr. Lim, one more.
Thank you through you, Chair Bryant. Can you just give me one minute? I'm just going to try to share my screen, and I do have a presentation. Should have been logged in earlier. Thank you for your patience. Test. So I prepared a present- So I prepared a presentation. There's much more detail in the staff report here, but I prepared a presentation to go through kind of the key highlights that are included in the staff report. There are a number of areas, and I think it'll be just be useful to council to walk through this presentation. So just to give you some background, so this is the first of its kind. Normally, we only do Q1 to Q3 reports. It was it's probably best practice to do a fourth quarter report. And this basically summarizes the 2024 financial year end. And so council is aware, we do have formal financial statements. The auditor comes in, presents formal financial statements and asks for them to be approved, but they're written in accounting language, PSAB format. And sometimes it's very difficult to tie that format back to the budget that you approve here. So this is the intention here is to give council a better understanding of how we ended from a budget to actuals perspective. But again, this is mostly for information. This isn't a fully audited account of all of our finances, but it is generally accurate. We think most of the items are captured here, but the true financial picture is part of our financial information return. And when the auditor comes, they'll present the formal financial statements. But this does give kind of a high level report. So we are projecting deficits, projecting, we've already kind of realized deficits in both a tax and utility situation, and likely they'll be funded from reserve funds, operating contingency reserves. Recommendations will again come once we finalize all of those entries. But likely they'll be recommended to come from the operating contingency and then the utility reserves. The future plan is to develop more formal key performance indicators for council to get a better idea of where we are benchmarked to some of our peers and some of our comparators. We don't have that currently, but this is kind of a continuous improvement effort. There is a recommendation and it was a last minute kind of adjustment or addition to this. And I'll go through that in a little bit more detail to retain a consultant to deal with our tangible capital assets backlog to be funded through the operating contingency reserve. And I'll go through the the need for that. And then part of the reason would be funding from contingency reserves for that. But hopefully that will generate additional OCIF funding to fund that piece of it. So again, this more detail can be found in the staff report, but I'd just like to go through this financial analysis in a little bit more detail. So here are the the kind of key areas, the operating budget performance, a department overview, utility budget performance, capital spending, reserve balances, a debt or financing analysis, some systemic challenges and some of the actions we've taken to date. So the Coles Notes version of the operating tax-supported budget is in 2024. We're ending in a $380,000 deficit. So this slide shows how those deficits compare over time. So this is the largest deficit we've had as far as I could go back. It only goes back to 2017, but this is the largest tax-supported deficit that we've had, especially compared to 2023, when we had a somewhat significant surplus. But one thing I mentioned in the report is investment income. In 2023, we had $600,000 in its surplus investment income. And that's related to the very high interest rates we've had to try to bring down inflation from the post-pandemic environment. So we had much more investment income than we normally would have, both in 2023, when we had 600,000 extra in investment income, and also in 2024, when we had 400,000 in investment income. So if we didn't have that investment income, these deficits would be much more substantial. It is a bit of a concern going forward in 2025, because likely the interest rates have already dropped in 2025 and could drop further. So it's unlikely that we'll have continuing investment returns to offset this in future years. This is a breakdown by departments, looking at each individual department. So the two key areas, there's a few individual variances. The biggest concerns or the biggest items of note in financial services, you can see there's a significant surplus. 327,000, that's again driven by investment returns. That's where the investment surplus is recorded in there. So that's offsetting some of the deficit. Fire Services had a $241,000 deficit, and that's similar to the deficit that we had in 2023. And council will recall that in the budget 2025, we we kind of adjusted for this or we corrected this item, because we weren't budgeting for the most up-to-date fire salaries, and we've corrected that. And hopefully that won't continue in 2025 on the fireside. Infrastructure Services was closely aligned to budget. But one thing I will just note for Infrastructure Services is one of the recommendations in the previous report was any surplus in winter control that was realized in 2024 would be directed potentially to the Winter Control Reserve. We didn't really have much of a surplus in winter control in 2024 that we were expecting. So there really isn't the surplus to allocate to winter control, the reserve. And we do anticipate that winter control could be a concern in 2025. Again, this is just 2024, but this could be a concern in 2025. And the the larger deficit is in Recreation and Community Services, mostly driven through overtime and additional staffing costs. Also, there was a number of leaves. So we're hoping that we corrected most of those changes in the 2025 budget as well. We did increase a number of these, but it is a similar deficit that was experienced in RCS in 2023 and again in 2024. So the overall number is about 370,000. There isn't a recommendation on the table here to fund that. That again will come with the financial statements and the surplus deficit report. But this gives council a better picture ahead of time and ahead of that report. The idea would be to fund this through operating contingency, because it is related to the tax-supported side. The utility side, so this won't be a surprise to council. It's actually a little bit better than we were anticipating. Wastewater had an $836,000 deficit, where water actually came in better than expected. We are projecting potentially it could be up to a $500,000 deficit. And this is 150,000. So it's a little bit better than we anticipated, but still it's close to a million dollars on the utility side deficit in 2024. Again, to to give you some history, we've we've been having small surpluses and deficits in previous years. But in 2022, there was an extremely large deficit, almost a million dollars in 2022, just about 400,000 in 2023. And then this is almost a million dollars now in 2024. So it's almost 2.5 million dollars in continuing deficits for the last three years on the utility side. This, there's a dedicated team, Stephen is in place to look at some of these deficits. And it looks like there has been improvements in 2025 and we'll be reporting in two weeks on the 2025 Q1 report. But these these deficits need to be funded, because we didn't have a contingency reserve from the capital reserves, which draw down the reserves, which is kind of offsetting some of those reserve funds that you see. The fourth item is to go through the capital budget. And I'd just like to take a little bit of time to kind of walk through this slide. There's a there's a lot of information here. So the first item here is the the green, or sorry, the orange bar is the capital budget in year. The and the green bar is the annual spend on the capital side. So the first thing you'll notice is the we don't spend our full capital budget each year. It's roughly from 50% to 60% in 2024 is the spending on our capital budget. And that's through a variety of different reasons. It could be just delays in project timing. It could be for all different kinds of reasons. And it's not uncommon that you wouldn't spend your entire capital program in a in a single year. What is a bit unique for us is we then rebudget the remaining amount again in the next year. So sometimes that same project can be budgeted again in multiple budget years. So some of that capital budget that you're seeing is carry forward, unspent capital from previous years. And the best practice really is to allocate the budget in one year and not to kind of rebudget in the next year. So kind of reserve some of that funding. So you're not, so it's a little easier to kind of compare the actual capital budget and the capital spending. They can be aligned a little bit better. The problem that we have is our account structure isn't really set up to do that kind of project level accounting, where you set a project budget and you have multi-years against a capital budget. So with the new finance software, we're going to update our chart of accounts and hopefully change some of those project accounting to be more in line with best practices. The second important item to to look at here is the gray bar, which is uncapitalized TCA. So TCA stands for tangible capital assets. And it's a bit of an accounting term. So this this accounts for construction in progress and tangible capital assets. So what this means is every year as we complete capital projects, there should be a closeout process. And those capital assets gets put on our balance sheet, on our books essentially. And then we do depreciation entries on each of those capital assets to make sure we're accounting for everything correctly. So as you can see, in 2020, you would expect a small amount of this uncapitalized or construction in progress each year. This could be a road, for example, that started in one year, but hasn't been finished. So it's not ready to be capitalized. And then in the next year, we go and we we recapitalize it in the next year. But that hasn't necessarily been happening since I would say 2021 or so. So that uncapitalized TCA has grown each year in 2022 and 2023. And now in 2024, it's somewhere around the $70 million amount, which represents even compared to our capital spend or our capital budget, a significant amount. I don't want to go into all of the details, but essentially this needs needs to be capitalized. And this is part of the recommendation on here. There's a significant backlog of almost five years of capital projects that need to be capitalized. And we need to kind of really address that backlog. It's been growing and it's at a point where we really need to address it. One of the items, this TCA kind of capital requirement is reported in our financial information return. Yeah.
Sorry about that. Need to understand that graph, this presentation. 2024, $70 million. Is that cumulative of 23s, 22s, 21s, and what happened 24? Or do I need to add 70 million plus 45 million plus 20 million?
It's it's a good question. It is it is cumulative, sorry. It is cumulative, so it's a it's a uncapitalized balance. So we know how much we've spent that we haven't capitalized. So that bar, one way to look at it is the bar is growing by the green bar. So the gray bar here, you add the the green bar and essentially it's the previous year's green bar. So it's a cumulative.
So 70 million, probably not 150 million.
That's correct, because we don't, we haven't had that much capital spending. But essentially, we haven't capitalized any of our capital projects. We've done some small amounts of capitalization, but we haven't done the full capitalization that we need. So besides all the financial reasons that this is important to display properly on the books, one of the most important reasons is we report our total capital assets to the province in our FIR return, and they give us OCIF funding based on our total capital assets. So by not including 70 million dollars of assets on our books or reporting to the province, that's funding that they're allocating based on your total capital value that we're not receiving essentially. So we haven't been receiving the funding in OCIF that we should have been receiving, because we haven't been reporting the full amount in in capital assets. I don't know the exact amount. I haven't, it's a very complicated formula, but it's in the hundreds of thousands that we could have been receiving in additional OCIF funding, which is why I'm recommending that it's an urgent item. It will pay for itself essentially to address this backlog in increased OCIF funding to get this backlog, get it on the books, get it to the province. And then they'll now record increased asset values and we'll increase our OCIF funding related to this.
Mayor Schultz?
Thank you. Just along that line, what's stopping us from capitalizing?
It's essentially staff capacity. This is again before my time, but I believe there was a vacancy in 2022 for the Asset Management Coordinator and the backlog built since then.
It was an oversight that needs to be corrected. And at this point in time, we know it's here. Can we correct it expeditiously?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to go ahead or is there any other questions at this point? Okay, go ahead.
So our reserve balances, just to, this won't be a surprise. This is very similar to the the slide shown during the budget process. So our reserve balances have declined pretty considerably in the last five years. So in 2020, we had roughly close to 25 million dollars in reserves. But through those, say, utility deficits, that's the 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 orange or the purple bar. So those utility deficits have drawn down those utility reserve balances. Development charges have been spending, we haven't been collecting a lot of development charges. And there's other internal borrowing has kind of reduced some of those discretionary reserves. So each year, we've kind of pulled more and more from those reserve balances. We did make some strides in 2025 budget to help address some of these, but that is the declining trend. We have been growing as a municipality over the last five years as well. So on a per capita basis, our reserves have decreased even sharper. You would almost expect them to be increasing. And just the last slide, I want to, well, there's a couple more slides. But the next slide is is really just to talk a little bit more about debt and financing. And this is maybe pertinent to Counselor Schwinn's question in the for the previous report. So the blue bars represent external debentures. So this is our tax-supported debt that we have outstanding and our utility debt. And it's relatively low in speaking. Every time we make a principal payment, it reduces that external debenture. The the spring issue will increase both the tax-supported and utility debt. But the the internal borrowing, that primarily represents the Bresla Drain Project. So when we issue the debenture related to the Bresla Drain, we will take a big chunk of that internal borrowing and make it external borrowing. But any of the orange bars wasn't previously communicated to council to be aware of the full financing picture. Best practice, if you don't have a funding source identified, you should be using kind of this internal borrowing or a reserve fund. So you have a more clearer picture. So when you do issue debt or do have financing, you have a better picture of where that money is is coming from. This DC inter-fund borrowing, it's not a, I wouldn't say this is a net external borrowing cost, but it is that internal borrowing, which I just talked about in the DC report, where we are borrowing from different DC reserves, mainly on the water and wastewater side, to pay back the development charges. So we do have essentially $4 million of borrowing against the roads DC in order to fund our water and wastewater DCs. DC credits, again, I mentioned this previously. There's around $600,000 for DC credits. Those are credits that need to be repaid from future revenues that are coming from development. So we won't be able to basically put those money, that money into reserves. We'll have to pay back these DC credits. So they're not necessarily debt in an external debenture perspective, but they are a liability in that they will need to be paid from future revenues. And so it's around 600,000 now. We're estimating that's going to go to 1.3 million by the the end of this year. And it could increase further with front-ending agreements. So any any debt like this, I can So any any debt like this, I can go, I need to amend the debt policy to make sure we're capturing any of these DC credits or any of these front-ending agreements because they are a form of off-balance-sheet financing or external financing. And then the last item, it was just triggered on me a few months ago when we were discussing the CHP engine, the Combined Heat and Power Engine. I wanted to look into that agreement in a little bit more detail. And so we do owe, if we wanted to get out of that agreement right now, we would owe $1.2 million on that CHP engine. So this is kind of a long-term lease, which again is a form of external financing. So we should be recording and tracking that as another form of of debt. So that is revenue coming in would have to go to to make some of those payments. And I think we've offset utility savings to pay for that, but it is still a liability or a borrowing that we need to account for. So just just quickly on this. This is this is kind of a a problem-solving chart. So this is kind of a root cause analysis. So what we're looking at here, I feel, are are kind of symptoms and and the patterns and trends. So we're looking at current deficits and reserve balances. There is kind of an an ongoing trend, like kind of a deeper trend of a declining fiscal position. And going a little bit deeper is some of these are the the structures in place or some of our processes, some of our shorter-term thinking, the lack of financial models, where are kind of driving some of these symptoms in here. So hopefully with improved financial software, with additional staffing, we'll be improving some of these patterns and trends. But also some of these beliefs, these kind of core beliefs, just having more of a focus on financial analysis, financial sustainability, just really need kind of more of a cultural shift to incorporate kind of finance in kind of everything that we do in order to impact kind of that higher-level piece. So some of the actions we've already taken in 2025, these are more on kind of that higher-level structural piece. So FIRE, we increased the part-time wages, so hopefully that'll be reflected in the 2025 budget. We've increased improved budget monitoring and development on the RCS side. We're funding from the operating deficit, the operating deficit. Hopefully, there should be enough in the Inova dividend to cover the contingencies for for the operating contingency utility deficits. There's ongoing work with Stephen, and there'll be an update coming to council in June on some of the work that's been happening there. In 2025, we had budgeted equipment reserve contributions. I talked about the new financial software that's coming. We developed operating contingencies for utilities budgets in the 2025 budget. So hopefully there'll be some funding available to offset future deficits. We talked before about an HR contingency potentially to fund future staffing deficits. So that reserve was created recently using the WSIB funding. And we have a new financial analyst that's hopefully starting in a few weeks to help us develop some of these financial models. But again, what this is, these are kind of short-term actions to really get at kind of those those deep, deeper pieces. We kind of just need to have a more longer-term cultural shift to embed finance in pretty much everything we do. We need to move away from short-term thinking and planning, increase finance involvement in strategy and corporate decision-making. We need to integrate the budgets and strategic plans that we have. There needs to be improvements in financial oversight and update some of our financial policies. And there isn't, there really isn't a quick fix for some of this. It's going to stake sustained effort to create lasting change. So with that, I'll answer any questions. And I'll just remind council that this report is really received for information. But there was a recommendation, as we kind of discussed, to address the tangible capital assets backlog, to engage a consultant to get, make sure we have that backlog addressed and get those tangible capital assets on the books.
Thank you. I know we have a question coming from Mr. Schwint.
That's wanting to go back to slide on the deficit, so on deficit law reserves summary. I think it's showing what 12 million, total reserves. Is that the same number we were shown during budget in January? I thought we were more like eight million.
So through you, Chair Brian, it is a little bit different. There's there's a couple differences. It's even different than the attachment that's in accompanying this report. So the first is we now have better information in April, May than we did during January, February. So more of those entries have been in there. The other key item for this is it incorporates the deficits that we had for 2024. I've already reflected those in these reserve balances. So some areas are a little bit better and some areas are a little example in this.
Can you give me an order or a bag of two of the differences from what we did our planning based on in January to what this is?
I'd have to go back and and look to see what what we reported in January. I don't think they're significantly different in some areas. I think they're a little bit better and some they're a little bit worse, but I can I can definitely get that that information.
Mayor Shantz?
Thank you. Just wanting to talk a bit about internal borrowing because I I feel like there's some issues with the internal borrowing. And I know previous council, we had talked about internal borrowing as a way to reduce some of the operating expenses in in terms of the cost of borrowing. Is that is that wrong-headed thinking? Or I'm just not quite clear where. I understand that now we're in a position where, you know, the reserves are are lower and we maybe need to fix it. But can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure, through the chair to Mayor Shantz. Not to get too technical into it, but I think there's two types of internal borrowing. Probably the easiest way to describe the first kind, which is fine, which is, I don't think there's an issue really with with something like either the CHP engine or even the LED streetlights, where we have an upfront cost, we're paying for it ourselves. And then we have kind of a payback period and we're identifying that through savings. So any kind of future repayments, say for the CHP engine, are offset by lower utility costs. So they're kind of offsetting. And so, I mean, the main distinction for me is really a reporting difference that I would report that that's the the cost to make sure that you can track that and then also report the revenue, so you can see those separately. I think previously we kind of combined them and it was harder to to understand how much is outstanding and how much in the operating budget that we're we're paying for that. So that's the first type of internal borrowing. And I don't think there's anything wrong-headed about that. It does save instead of going out to borrow, then you can kind of pay back yourself essentially to give yourself some of that interest. The only caveat with that is just to make sure that you have enough reserve funds, so you know what you're borrowing against. That's again, that reporting piece that if you have very low reserves, you may not have a million or $2 million to borrow from. You're going to have run out of money essentially shortly. The second type of that internal borrowing is a little bit more difficult to kind of explain, but I think it relates to Counselor Schwinn's previous question. And I could pull up the Excel file. But if you recall, during the capital budget, and we have a a project cost, and then there's a bunch of columns that identify the funding source. Some are infrastructure reserve, they have a tax levy, there's a whole bunch of different DCs. And then some are debt, for example. So it's no problem if some of those funds are funded through, say, infrastructure reserve. We'll fund them directly through through our reserve balances. But if something's identified as debt, our past practice hasn't been to, well, we're going to fund it from a reserve in the first place. And then when we get the back, the the debt, we'll repay that kind of reserve. What we do is kind of just float the cash just through our bank account because debt had been the identified funding source. So we just, we're just paying for it right out of the bank account. So it's very difficult then to track until you just notice that your bank account balances are low. And then then you're in a kind of a cash situation. So the best practice there would be identify something, some kind of a funding source. And I've been using the, and that's part of this to Counselor Schwinn's question. Some of this big reduction in discretionary reserves is I'm I'm essentially making sure that we're accounting for any of those large projects against a reserve. So we're not going to spend that reserve balance because it's already being spent through this internal borrowing. And then if we do get any future revenues or future debt in, that we pay back that reserve. The problem is if you don't do that, you could spend both the reserve and that other money, and you get into a kind of a a cash situation. So you just want to make sure you're identifying where you're taking any of that internal borrowing from, so you don't run out of money essentially.
Any other questions, council? Counselor Schwinn?
Yeah, you mentioned the new accounting software, Sundar. Wait, can you give us an update on where we at a kind of timeline for the next, say, six months to a year?
Sure, through the chair to Counselor Schwinn. So we did hire a new project manager. They're going to start on January 2nd. So June 2nd, thank you. So next week, they'll they'll be in on Monday essentially. And she's very experienced, has done a lot of software implementation. So I have no doubt that she's going to be instrumental in getting the software up to date. So the first plan is really to develop kind of a a project plan. And I intend, once she gets her feet wet, to introduce her to council and to develop and present that plan to council of how we're going to implement that software. We've been in a bit of a holding pattern with the vendor because we were waiting for this position to get into place. So we just need to understand some of our staff capacity because we need to understand some of the timing of what parts we can do first as part of that, because it's an all-encompassing software. There's tax, utility and finance. So we want to make sure we have the staff capacity to do all of that implementation first. But we're hoping we can start moving on that once this, in the next couple of months, very quickly.
Any other questions, council? Mr. Brenneman?
Yeah, just just a few, sorry, comments to supplement what Column has noted. I think there's a couple of things to highlight with respect to the recommendation on help with respect to tangible capital assets. I just would like to add, I I think if you look at the if you follow the timeframe in which we started falling behind, it I would say it's not, it wasn't just where we were having some vacancies or challenges with respect to keeping up on asset management and and the priorities that we needed to achieve, even with deadlines in terms of compliance with provincial government. But we went through some challenges in the finance department as well during that time in terms of health leaves and things of that nature. And, you know, the reality is, yes, we fell behind. And at times, you know, the reality is when you're under-resourced in multiple areas, it's easy to say, okay, this is what needs to rise to the top and other things may fall off. And I I think it's important, you know, Column and I've talked about the fact that going forward, while this is a quick fix, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we're properly resourced going forward to be able to stay on top of this. This isn't something that we want to do catch up on every four years or every three years. We want to be able to stay on top of this because, as Column noted, the impact with respect to opportunities for funding. The other thing I think that it's important to emphasize, and and I think this may be where some had been asking relative to questions is with respect to external and internal borrowing. You know, I think it needs to be clear that Column certainly has brought a an approach to make sure that it's crystal clear on not just what we're externally borrowing, but what we're internally borrowing. That's not to say that that wasn't ever decided upon in the past. Whenever, you know, when, as the mayor had noted, whenever we had budget meetings, there, you know, both the mayor and I have been around where council members have suggested, whether it's the street lighting project or other projects, challenged staff not to do the external debenture and said, we'd like to do the internal borrowing. But I think also I want to underscore, you know, Column has said in the past that it's important, it's important as well to understand basically how we're doing financially. What's our capacity to actually internally borrow so that we're not putting ourselves in a difficult situation and make appropriate evaluations that way? So a lot of those things are in the spirit of continuous improvement. So I don't, you know, I want to make sure everyone understands. These charts just are made to reinforce that council has a clear picture on all of the decisions that have been made in the past with respect to both external and internal borrowing situations. Because even with respect to DC credit agreements are not new in terms of entering in to development community. Bresla wouldn't have got started without front-ending agreements and and DCs paid back not only to the developers, but also there was processes where the city of Kitchener had to be paid back because of the way the servicing is tied in from a cross-border standpoint. So just some of those contextual pieces that I wanted to emphasize to make sure that this council, you know, being in its third year, has some background on that too from a historical perspective.
Questions? Okay, comments?
I'm not all comfortable where we at in terms of our finances. I don't like the numbers, none of us do like the numbers. But I don't think any of us are overly confident that we know the numbers as well to want to know them. I'm not pointing fingers at your department, Column. It's just a function of where we at with our systems. What was it? Budgeted and dedicated for the last 20 years. And going forward, we've got a really tough budget coming up. I don't think we're going to have the information available to us to make the good decisions that we need to be making. So we're in May right now, budget deliberations start next month for preliminary talks. I'm wondering about this $35,000 consultant. Should that become a change to a two-year contract position to get some finance help in the department? I'm not getting warm fuzzies if the department's going to be well-resourced for the next six months. The changes that may or may not happen. It's a time to bite the bullet. I hate spending more money, but I'm scared not to. So I guess I'm wondering, Director, if we change that to a contract person full-time, would that help bring you better numbers for us to have business fall?
Through the chair. We definitely, we are hopeful that the senior financial analyst will will be on-boarded here, but it wasn't intended that they would do the TCA backup. And there's other growth-related pressures as well. So it would definitely help. More resources, absolutely. We're definitely under-resourced in finance and we're dealing with a big backlog. My only concern would be just the caliber of someone that you could get on a very short-term contract. That's why we'd suggested a consultant. But I would be definitely open to additional resources or funding, definitely make it work and just to help, it would help.
I guess I'm curious what the members' council's confidence level is and whether they'd like to see more resources for this.
Mr. Brenneman, you have a comment?
Yeah, my only, my only challenge with having this discussion on the fly is is that, you know, as senior management, we've also talked about the staffing forecast and coming back to council following budget. You know, with respect to the needs and there definitely is needs identified with respect to finance. But we need to be careful because, you know, I think at the end of the day, Column briefly mentioned there's challenges related to growth as well. You know, and we've looked what may be needed. Again, we want to make sure that if we're adding resources to finance, they're exactly what the department needs, you know. And there's challenges right now, as we know, with making sure that we're also doing our finances right with 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 respect to planning for future growth as well. And I, and I think in order to provide context tonight is, you know, the the upcoming challenges that we have related to some potential leaves, you know, have more to do with certain parts of the finance department. No doubt, we need supports, but this particular, as Column has But this particular, as Column has noted, this particular ask, it's not uncommon for me as Paudes to go to certain firms that are well-versed in these fields to get this type of information quickly fixed and addressed. But I would also echo and underscore, there's definitely needs with respect to, to finance. But I think, you know, ultimately it's important for council to see a picture on the finance department, but also some of the, the other areas as well. Anyways, just food for thought. That's not to derail any sort of conversation, but I always want to be careful with decisions being made on the fly because I'm always a fan of council having all of the best information in front of you to be able to make a well-informed decision on, on the needs, not with, not just within finance, but, but also in, in the broader corporate structure.
Mayor Shont?
Thank you. I think I've got two questions. The first one's actually to Counselor Schwint. What, what speci- can you be specific or a little more specific in what you think you need from finance heading into the budget season? Just so Column and David can think about that in the bigger picture.
Like most, a lot of them are identified by comments report. We don't have a five-year capital forecast. And I guess I'm not convinced to be able to develop one for this budget season. I don't think any of us on council are, I guess, sure about the reserve balances. And what is our net position today? We should have better numbers on that going forward. And I guess I'm worried that, do we have the capacity to do those numbers, even with financial analysts coming on board? Being worried that a person may have to backfill because of leaves. And I see us just juggling and not getting ahead is my concern.
Okay. Thank you. I get, I guess, um, Colm, does that does that give you any? Does, does that help you in thi- I, I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight on hiring someone for a couple of years that, that's, is on the fly and I, I don't think that would be good planning, but does that help you a little bit if you're going to think about what resources you need in order to get the budget that council's looking for?
Through the chair, it does help. I think I share Counselor Schwinn's desire and I think I know what he's looking for because I'm looking for the same thing. It's very difficult. There's not a, there's a lot of manual manipulation when we're trying to calculate reserve balances because we have to assume certain commitments and things. And it's just our current approach. And I don't think this is, I'm the first person you've heard this from, that it's very difficult to understand kind of our true reserve picture. And I think I echo Counselor Schwinn's concern that it's going to be a couple of years before we get the finance software in place to get that really good information. But there is still work we can do in the interim. We can still do some manual manipulation and increased comparisons. You know, five-year averages, a lot more information that we could provide to council during the budget. Unfortunately, it's just more staff time and manual manipulation. And there is a number of just staffing challenges that we've just been experiencing for the last couple of years in finance that it's very hard for us to get ahead. I am very confident that the new senior financial analyst will help us. But then it's if we do have any vacancies or leaves, then it is offsetting and we're back to kind of square one. We're not necessarily getting ahead, but it does help me kind of determine what those true needs were and to the CEO Brendanman's point that there are maybe a specific ask then that we could say this is what would help us get to where you need to, to be.
So we're, we're hi- we're definitely hiring one senior analyst. This is maybe not a good question to ask, but do you need two?
Through the chair? Yes, yes.
Do you have another question? I'm going to stop there for the moment. I'm going to let it repander. Counselor Cudow.
Thanks, Chair. Through you, one comment, one question. Director, landing your presentation, you spoke to the systemic need and I think that that's what I'm hearing from you is, and that's what I'm hearing from other councils, is this is a systemic problem in our finance department. And it really doesn't matter in my mind if it's a contract or if it's a two-year contract, sorry, if it's a consultant or a two-year contract. Neither one is really going to address the systemic need that we're seeing here. Yes, it's a Band-Aid solution. But are we mopping up the floor while the bathtub overflows? That's kind of the concern I have. That's the comment. The question that I have is because we're kind of asking for the types of data we would want, I would just weigh in that something that I've been looking for is a detailed comparative analysis around some similar jurisdictions to us and some of the challenges they're facing and how they're managing that. I'd just like to benchmark where we're at compared to some close municipalities.
Counsel, do we have any other questions? Counselor Schwint?
Yeah, I guess I'll follow up on Mayor Shont's question, what, what I want. And another thing I think is important to us is we're five months through the year. By then, June will be halfway through. Going into budget, it'd be nice to know where the big variances. So we know where we're starting from. And I don't think this is now May, we're getting December's results. So to get June results, probably be October. Maybe November, depending on summer holidays, et cetera. And that's not timely enough for what our next year's budget conversation should be. So I'm thinking on the fly, that's one more thing that I think we need. And I wasn't serious about hiring the person tight or making that decision, but putting on the agenda for a thought over June and early July, I am serious about that.
Counsel, Mayor Shont?
Since some of, some of you have put out what some of your suggestions are for going into the budget. I'll just add that one of the things that, that I'm looking for and actually, Column and, and David and I met about this earlier today is, is looking at how we allocate dividends and investments versus operating expenses. So I've never been a fan of, of putting the innovative dividend, for example, into the operating budget, but would rather see it into reserves. So I'll just put that out there in the mix since we're sort of going down that rabbit hole right now. It seems like a good time to, to say that. And then actual, actual amounts versus budgeted amounts and where those, maybe that goes to your question on variances as well. But not just this year's variances, the past X number of years' variances.
Yeah, I think the other thing through you, Madam Chair, you know, I think that council will see in the fullness of time in terms of addressing where the resourcing challenges and needs are and, and also meeting council's expectations relate to a number of areas. We are, if, we are, even though we have stage managed growth, we are an attractive municipality for growth. And there are challenges to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible in terms of how we're planning for that growth and implementing that growth. So right there, there, there is a need for support for, you know, a financial analyst that can help with respect to our growth-related needs. Council has noted and, and we agree that there is a need, you know, to build not just a five-year, but a reliable ten-year. There, you know, in, in municipalities of our size, there are often staff resources from finance to support other departments, you know, with respect to developing that. Because again, you're relying on the core expertise to support other departments, no different than the clerks as an internal department, support other departments in terms of their expertise and their, their professional involvement. You know, and, and, you know, for that matter, just because again, we're just understanding context. You know, not only has finance identified this, but other departments over the years. As a growing municipality with lots of purchasing challenges, we have a need with respect to support for, for purchasing, you know, and, and procurement. I mean, by and large, you know, and I guess this goes back to, I can't remember whether it was, was Column or who, but you know, during the budget, we talked about how we can't continue to make decisions based on being this size of municipality. We have to understand where, where we're at. Now we're, we're something to that extent. You know, I, I think it behooves us to understand that if you look at the, if you look at the financial resources that we've been working with for quite a number of years, the reality is that our director not only did budget and high-level issues around that, but also was involved in all procurement, RFPs, tenders, things like that. And at the end of the day, if you spread your resources too thin, then that also is where you're not necessarily being able to make sure that you're mining all of the areas, tracking, monitoring of things that, that need to happen. So again, I want to reiterate, there's, there's no doubt that council, and I would agree with this, there are resourcing challenges within finance, but there's a multitude of resources. Column and I've talked about that at quite length. But I've also talked with the other departments, you know, with the realities of, of, of being a growing municipality and the challenge that we have. And I, I understand this all is, is always a difficult conversation. It's often, you know, during budget time, I'm sure you're hearing it from the public, you know, we don't need any more staff. We don't need any more staff, cutback on staff. But the reality is, I think, you know, whether it can be with respect to what we're discussing finance, or whether it can be the times that Jared and his team have said, well, you know, we inherited this infrastructure because we didn't have enough development engineering staff inspecting, you know, what needed to at the front end. And now we're having to prematurely make capital investments that we shouldn't have. Again, I think this all feeds into a great discussion that I think we need to have with council at budget time with respect to where we're at, where we're going to, and how we make sure that we're not only growing responsibility, that we're servicing things properly, but also from a finance standpoint, that ultimately, as Column presented shortly after he arrived, we're also on a good path to long-term fiscal sustainability and, and a responsible framework. That will be important. And, you know, tonight, there's been some discussion, you know, on the growth front related to the interim control bylaw. The other thing, quite frankly, that's important related to that interim control bylaw is not just so that we can phase and manage growth appropriately, not just so that we can get the servicing front. But because of the, the amount of growth, and remember, to date, we've been growing primarily in the past in Almyer and St. Jacobs, we're an extension of existing built-up areas. As the mayor noted in her state of the township address, the growth plan for Breslaw towards 2051 is unprecedented. There are three pillars that will be important going forward. Planning, infrastructure, I E servicing, and the financial side of growth. Because it will be important as we go forward with the staging and development of growth, that council understands all three pillars. The planning, the servicing, and, and the, the financial side of things. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none before you is a recommendation. Do I have a mover? Counselor Cudow, a seconder? Sorry? Oh, sorry, Counselor Grant, I didn't see you. Okay, we do have a mover and a seconder. Do we have any other questions? Comments? Mayor Shont?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Counselor Schwinn talked about, do we use this thirty-five thousand dollars for a consultant? Or do we put that into a bigger package that looks at a permanent position? I, I think before I vote on this, I'd like a little more direction from somebody.
So yeah, I guess I'm not comfortable with this motion by itself. I'd really like council to provide some direction to staff to come back to us. I would say by the end of June with a couple of options. One, just do this. Two, make it better part of a bigger resource enhancement that can take on more duties. The third one, I'm spitballing here, but is how do we build more flexibility in the team? So if we do have unexpected staffing challenges in the next six months, we can adapt better to give us a range of options for this money and possibly some more. But to just decide on this tonight with no next steps, I can't support it.
Mayor Shont?
So our next meeting is June tenth. Is that something that we could just put a hold on this and get a little more background, something like what Counselor Schwinn's recommending?
Through the chair, that, that makes sense to, I was nodding along with both you and Counselor Schwinn. This discussion was informative for me. When I proposed this, we didn't have this kind of context, so I think I could come back with this as an option and then other potential items with more information that, that council could digest and well done.
So then I think, I think it would be appropriate, and I'll ask Jeff to make sure I'm doing this right, but I, I think it would be appropriate to defer this motion to June tenth for staff to come back with some of the other options in conjunction with it.
So we need agreement from the mover and the seconder on this.
We do have a mover and seconder for the motion. You can, a member of council could put a motion on the table to, to defer, but I mean, i- if you want to ask the mover.
Nathan and.
Yeah, Counselor Cudow, see if they're okay with that. Maybe it's easier just to come to that agreement.
Okay, do you want to defer or?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Kayla, are you okay with that?
I was going to suggest that if Counselor Cudow didn't want to defer, that I was okay with that.
Okay, so then we will defer till the next meeting then to make any decisions.
Just on direction?
Yeah. Okay, everybody's okay with that? And I saw your hand up, Counselor Burgess, comments, questions?
I'll just make a brief comment through you, Chair, kind of opposite to maybe what's been saying in here. I agree with a lot of the points, but I think this is a need now. We're not hiring someone for a part-time. It's just a consultant for one issue. Let's get it done. And a lot of the issues that we're having in the department, we don't know for sure if they're happening. We're onboarding a bunch of people. I think a meeting or two from now, not much is going to change. We're not really going to have a lot more guidance. It's kind of, got to see how this kind of plays out in a little bit of time, but that's just my two cents.
Okay, so we're deferred till the next meeting on this one then. Then we will move on to them. We have a motion regarding the rural speed strategy. Counselor Swint, as this was your motion, would you like to speak to it?
Sure, thanks, Counselor Bryant. I guess I'm bringing this forward tonight because I think it's important based on delegations we had both of this council and also regional council back February, March. Is, Wolf needs to have a clear position with the region as it's figuring out its real speed strategy. Helps staff out, helps region out, and it helps our community out to understand where our point of view is. As I said, I think we have to be aligned with public expectations. I believe that compliance to enforcement probably isn't the answer. We want public to buy in to achieve our goals with respect to safety. And I've got to state the obvious, we're all concerned about safety on our roads. We want to develop policies and practices that promote it. And it's not always just the stick, it's got to be the carrot as well. We also need to remember that what works in urban streets and subdivisions may not be appropriate on our roads and highways that are main commuter roads. So in March, we heard from the public that drives those commuter roads and heard that forty kilometers an hour on a highway just doesn't work. Leads to road rage, tailgating, unsafe passing, high variances in speed. And these are all highest situations that we're trying to avoid. We also know as far as perception, that speed cameras are seen as a cash cow for government and not seen as reasonable traffic enforcement. Rather, they appear arbitrary and necessary and intrusive when imposed by the region at higher level of government. I believe speed cameras do have a place in specific situations and locations. But as local representatives, shouldn't Woolwich be consulted and have input? We should know the areas better than upper-tier government. And we can have that input and do a better job in recommending to the region where those cameras should be, but also then getting buy-in from the general public. Roads like Laupshinger, Arthur Street, Turt Street, they're designed as commuter highways, smooth vehicles, and we need to keep traffic moving safely Roads like Lobzinger, Arthur Street, Turt Street, they're designed as commuter highways, smooth vehicles, and we need to keep traffic moving safely. While respecting pedestrians, but the twenty four seven forty kilometer hour zone in a rural area, it's not appropriate, it's not balanced. So this motion speaks to having flashing lights in school zones that operate on a timely basis when schools are in session. September to May, sorry, September to June, Monday to Friday, seven to six or pick a time. Strikes a balance between reducing speed and keeping traffic flowing. And on main roads, there's difference between urban and rural. And also means that we've got dialogue with our public and the region saying, hey, we can impact where this makes sense. So we're putting cams at the right place that are accepted. So that's why I'm bringing the motion forward. I think we've heard from the community.
Okay, council, do we have any comments, questions, Mayor Shans, then we'll go to.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this word, Counselor Schwent. I have a question on number two. Do you really mean that? School, the speed limits in front of schools on regional roads within settlement areas should remain at the standard. Posted fifty or sixty kilometers per hour because. I know a number of settlement areas that would really disagree with you on that and would want it. Within the settlement area to be at forty. So I I'm questioning if you mean within or outside of.
Sorry, number one, I'm back to let's have local people, local council making these determinations based on the situation. Example, I'm going to use is Arthur Street, that forty zone outside E D S S. I don't think makes a whole lot of sense. It's all of a sudden boom down to forty, it's back down to fifth, up to fifty downtown Almyra. Why is there a difference? To me, it's should be consistent. And. Keep it going. So fifty to me makes sense in a lot of those areas. However, if there's a school in Winterburn. Where forty kilometers an hour makes more sense, let's do that. But arbitrarily make the lowest common denominator. Doesn't make sense to me.
So I'd be careful on number two of being too specific on that. And I wonder if I could ask a question to Mr. Poupay about. What kind of consultation has the region? Been doing in terms of some of these initiatives?
Thank you. Through your chair. Brian to to Mayor Shans's question. Couple of points, I guess regarding automated speed enforcement. This has been ongoing conversation since around twenty eighteen. Reporting has been in twenty nineteen. So there's a lot of consultation. I want to be clear to the public that this is not something that just the region has done and passed on to us. All the area municipalities were involved in consultation with automated speed enforcement. It is something that took a lot of time and evolution. We did all agree to a a metric that was reviewed by University of Waterloo. A lot of time and energy went into that. And the predominant driver for that is roadside safety. I think what is important to note is posted speed limits do not garner compliance, flashing lights do not garner compliance. It is driver behavior that we are trying to change and the reason that forty kilometers an hour is the. Recommended and some municipalities in the region of Waterloo have suggested thirty kilometers an hour is because it does save lives. So that's the real driver. And it was every school zone in the region of Waterloo. So again, it wasn't an arbitrary look at different locate, it was school zones. To the intent of those is to turn into community safety zones and I appreciate from a staff perspective that there is. You know, opposition at times or even some politicizing of the rollout as things are happening. And the only other piece I think that's worth noting is that we do prioritize the ASE cameras. On local roads, the region has every right to do what they do on their road. So I think that's important as well to note. But the data is the data as far as why the forty. So we would be on an island if Woolwich was to adopt anything. Outside of forty kilometers in in a school zone in an urban limit, we would be on our own. That is not anything that I'm aware any other area municipality is doing. It's either thirty or forty. Nobody is proposing anything greater and and simply because of if you are hit by a. By a car at forty kilometers, you have a better chance of survival than at fifty. Unfortunately, it would be fatal likely.
Counselor Cado?
Thanks, Chair. Through you, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate Counselor Schwind for really championing this. I think it is an important one. For our residents. In addition to everything that was outlined already, one of my biggest concerns in relation to the perception of this being a cash grab. Is I still don't have a clear indication of out of. The tickets that are issued, how many dollars actually stays in Woolwich? And I'm of the opinion that that's a big whopping zero, which is problematic for me.
Mr. Poupay?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Grant to Counselor Cado. So there. I apologize, I'm just having a quick look here, but there was a presentation that regional staff. Brought forward and there is a roadside safety reserve fund that automated speed enforcement revenue goes towards. So obviously it pays for itself and that's the unfortunate reality. It's paying for itself plus some. So Township Traffic Calming Initiative is one of the buckets. That that money does go towards. So the rural areas specifically, we have. The highest rates of fatalities on our roads, we have the greatest speed. So the townships are more exposed in a lot of the urban settlements and there's a specific bucket. Generated from revenues that will go to Township Traffic Calming Initiative specifically, just so we can clarify that.
Thanks for that. One other item that I was looking for clarification on. Is for number two, Mayor Shans, you had noted the fifty and sixty split now. The urban settlement area, I think, is what Jared said that kind of resonated with me. You know, if it was William Street, Almyra, sure, it makes sense to be forty. Free Bridges Road, probably not forty. And I think that this council had that discussion not long ago. So I think that that's the intent and I could be mistaken.
Okay, Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I I appreciate this coming forward. I. Like some other counselors have some concerns. I think residents of Ward Three would disagree with. With some of the proposals here. We have a lot of speeding issues within Ward Three. I are residents about their school zones feeling unsafe. For myself, I struggle with number four of the recommendation. Why I like the idea of prior consultation, I really struggle with the should not be used as a speed enforcement. As Mr. Poupay said. Speed in the township is more of a behavior modification. Issue and I I feel that in this case that consequences and speed enforcement are a way of modifying behavior. When it comes to excessive speed on the streets.
Thank you. Council, Counselor Burgess?
Through you, Chair. Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, Director Poupay, but yeah, part of my issue with the speed cameras too is just that these are in our municipality, but I feel like we're having very little say in them. To Counselor Cado's comments about the money. To the limits at which ticketing occurs, to the timing of the use, people are getting tickets at two AM in a school zone on a Sunday night. Is that needed? But we don't have a say in that. Again, in the cost of the tickets and all that, so. Without more consultation or if Woolwich having greater input, I struggle with just giving a free pass to install these everywhere.
Counselor Schmidt?
Thanks, I just want to adjust Counselor Grant's comments about. Prior consultation. So the intent on that is. Not say don't have speed cameras in Woolwich, is to make sure that we're part of the process. And having input and making sure they're going in the right locations.
I I would agree. I think that's the intent. I just, I worry that it doesn't read necessarily that way. So I think my, I struggle with the should not be used. Language there, I maybe we could adjust it because I'm fine with the prior consultation. I do think there is a place for us. As a council to provide insight for the region. I just, it's the should not be like, it's the implication that we shouldn't be using speed cameras at all that I struggle with.
Thank you, if I can, just through your chair to council, maybe. To help the situation out, I think we've got two situations going on. We have school zones on regional roads that's under their jurisdiction that. That Mayor Shans represents Woolwich residents on, so there's discussions to be had at that table. For roadways under our jurisdiction, our local roadways, we do have a priority ranking list and if it would suit council better. That we can certainly provide reporting for the priority rankings and the locations that are coming forward. So we could do that. Then then at least councils in the know would have some decision making abilities on what staff deemed to be the priority rankings based on that. Process and we could have that discussion. There are other discussions that could occur, but I would suggest I would be in camera given the. Sensitivity of the programming, but just for clarity, there is no cost to the township on this. But it is, we could also not afford to run this on our own. So I think that's important to state. It's incredibly laborious and intense programming to do, lots of legislation that's followed along with. And it was agreed a while ago by all the area municipalities at the time and things can change, appreciate that, that it was going to be. Managed and run by the region, but there would be. Funding available from that road safety fund that would generate any revenue from that. So. We are at the table regarding what that can happen, what we can do with those funds and maybe where those buckets should go. So I think those discussions are ongoing.
I would make a suggestion for rewarding on number four, if if it's agreeable to Counselor Schwent. Something like speed cameras should only be used as a speed enforcement tool on regional or township roads. Within Woolwich Township after consultation with Woolwich Council.
Same thing worded in a positive.
It just. Yeah. Any other comments from council?
If I may, Counselor or Chair. I I just had a one kind of additional comment and then a follow up question for Mr. Poupay. I, my one comment, I guess is. I think the intent of the speed strategy from the region was so that. The municipalities and the cities all had a cohesive policy. Why I. I agree in some instances that that broad stroke. Can have areas in in the municipalities that it doesn't make a lot of sense. I do think there is value in keeping a consistent. Kind of strategy across the the several municipalities. My, I guess my follow up question for Mr. Poupay is when it comes to consultation, developing this strategy. Were were the school boards included in that conversation? I'm just wondering if we also had their input as well as they are members of our community. I just am curious if they also. Have some sort of feeling about about the speed strategy.
Yeah, through Chair Bryant to Counselor Grant's question, certainly early on they were. I can't recall recently they are, but. I'm not sure that I've met anybody from the school board who does not support. Safety in school areas. This was well received by the school boards at the time of its rollout. I know before we had ASE. Waterloo Regional Police Services said they could spend the entire day in a school zone and ticket. It's it's unfortunate that that's the reality. But that that's fact. So yes, they certainly were a part of this and we haven't heard any negativity from the school boards at all.
Thank you.
Counselor Burgess?
Through you, Chair. I know you're in the chair, so you can't make amendments. But I know the one thing you brought up was on point one, number one there. Changing that from seven AM to seven PM if council is in agreement with that, just because in certain areas of. Sports and events and extracurricular can go later. So to add that extra two hours is another safety factor that we can have. Well. Not affecting drivers too much.
Thank you.
And and just for information purposes, I mean, council will do what the council will do, but through you, Chair, I want a couple of points on on the resolution. Their timed enforcement is archaic. Nobody does timed enforcement anymore. It creates challenges for enforcement in general, so. Everybody's tried to get away from the idea of enforcing things at specific times during specific months of year, just stating that fact, do what you will do with that. And then as far as identifying speed limits itself. It it does put staff in a difficult position if we are going to hard put numbers to. What we think that the posted speed limits are based on a council decision. I don't know that staff would need to attend, maybe it'd go to the inaugural meeting, but if it's already dictated on what the speeds are going to be in there, I think that that reduces. Staff time fairness to 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 the issue. So, you know, again, appreciate that these are very structured and. Very defined resolution. There's not a lot of flexibility and I just would say that from a staff perspective that. Not maybe the intent, I just want the want council to be aware of that. They could certainly save up some of our time.
You had a follow up, Counselor Burgess?
Yes, I may. Have all school zones already been dropped to forty? Throughout the region?
It's thirty or forty in urban settings. Be careful. Rural, no, I think that is still, that is the discussion piece. Sorry, through you, Chair to to Counselor Burgess. That's the big discussion piece is the rural. Appreciate that there has been a blanket paintbrush applied to school zones currently, but I think. Everything in the urban is either a thirty or a forty kilometers as far as I'm aware.
So I'm just wondering because there's been comments around point two here on dictating speed limits, if it should. Be worded more like number four, that speed limits aren't going to be changed without prior consultation to Woolwich Council or something along those lines. So. We can keep the status quo and there's less risk that we're doing it or less dictating to. Arbitrarily put a speed limit to it.
Mayor Shans?
So regional council, at least I think now regional council, regional staff are going to look at a rural strategy. So what's the best way to to deal with it? And I, they may still come back and say it should be eighty, sixty, forty. I I don't know what they're going to come back with, but they're going to rethink a separate strategy. For the the rural areas. I I guess I I would. Say not to be argumentative, Mr. Poupay, but man, maybe I'm just much more aware of it now. But I've seen, I feel like I see a lot more areas where there are the flashing lights. And when the lights are flashing is when the lower speed limit is in place, but. You know, maybe I'm hyper aware.
And appreciate that it exists. The challenge for enforcement was the light flashing, was it not flashing? It becomes an enforcement challenge when we've been talking to. Staff and and maybe a piece of clarity for for information sake as well. The region has reached out, they've had a bit of a town hall with us and they're going around to all the area municipalities specifically on the rural strategy and ASE in general. So we did speak to the lady who's implementing that and and that is a, an absolute factual concern as far as. The 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 ticket being valid, was the light flashing, was it not? So that's why they try to stay away again from time, space. And from flashing lights, they find that just the ASE camera being on, it has to notify the public. When you see a, you know, there's there's different signage that's up there, there has to be a notification and and that's when it's it's valid. So. That's just what we've been told from the enforcement side of things. So appreciate that it exists. It does, it, we do see flashing lights as well. It just creates other challenges too. Now you have to be close to hydro pole where you put them. There's a cost to the flashing light as well and and different situations would be easier to. Install them than others. So again, staff would recommend maybe not a hard. Statement on that, but again, that is council's will. If they want to do that, they they certainly have that ability.
Counselor Cado?
Thanks, Chair. Through you, to the point that you just made is, from what you've been hearing, is enforcement an issue? With police enforcing it or is it an enforcement issue with the camera itself? Because I could envision. Those flashing lights with the camera in operation and if it's between the hours of seven and five or seven and seven, whatever. It we land on. I mean, wouldn't that have a timestamp right on it? And regardless of the lights are going, if there's a sign up that says seven to seven. The charges will apply. I mean, that's the onus on the driver to follow the road signs, right?
And through your chair. Brian to to Counselor Cado. So what what I would like to suggest to council. Is that we package up all of this information because again, we're not on the inside of all this. This is a regional initiative enforced by them. But we have a planned meeting upcoming, certainly on the rural strategy. All of these questions and comments can be addressed. And that we provide a report to council and I think that would give you at least. The most up to date and current information because that is beyond myself at this moment too with some of the exact questioning. And I think that would be appropriate maybe before we, before council deliberates on the exact resolution, if that's appropriate.
Counselor Schmidt?
And few comments based on the conversation. I guess I'm. Hearing a worry about will the ticket be valid? And my first thought is was getting that ticket money the goal here or is awareness of the driver the goal? If they're stopped by a police officer and a conversation happens, they're well aware of the expectation of speed, whether or not they pay a fine. And if the letter comes in the mail and they have to go ahead and fight it, I think the message is sent home as well. So. I'm not too concerned or not as concerned about that. Counselor Grant brought up having a common. Strategy across the region. She's right there. I'm really curious, can staff give us an update on where kitchen is at? Because I thought they opted out. To some degree, I'm curious exactly, could they update out of what and how that's working? And I know this question, do we need a hard position on this? I guess to me it gives staff a position to start from. I'm well aware we never get all we want in this world. I never do. But if you don't have a starting point and a goal. You you don't know where we start. I know that the default position, if I'm a staff person, has to be for forty kilometers safer. How could I not be in support of that? Carry on. How could I not be in support of that? Carry on. But we also have to balance a public need, which is safe driver habits. And to me, forty kilometers isn't causing that.
Councillor Grant, you have a question?
Uh, I actually, yeah, yeah, a little bit of both. Um I I agree with councillor Schwint. I think this has generated a really good conversation. Um part of what I was going to do is motion for a deferral on voting on this resolution for um kind of coming back to what Mr. Pupay said, which was to package this this conversation and take it back to the region and come back with a report for us in in two weeks, if that's doable. And then maybe we can vote there.
Council, questions? Okay, I have a comment I'm going to throw out there. I have a school that sits in a sixty kilometer zone on a regional road. They want a community safety zone. They want a speed camera. Right now, it's on Jared's list as one of the um high-speed zones. It's they're go- they're going through there between eighty and ninety. Nobody's paying attention to the warning signs. The children have put together a petition asking to have this put in place because they feel they're unsafe going to school. So for me, all of these items pose a problem. I mean, I think we need to look at the safety of the children first. That's my biggest concern. And I think most of the regional roads are all sitting at sixty in the school zones, in my area anyway, from what I have seen.
I'm I'm confused, because to me, this motion says sixty kilometers an hour in those zones, they become school zones. meeting all the needs for your
But I've got the petition, so I, at this point
But it's me, it's saying petition wants this, we're giving this in that motion.
I'm I'm in the chair, so I can't get into this conversation, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
I can add, and and this is just what I am assuming, so correct me if I'm wrong, but uh those that are petitioning are petitioning for a lower speed of forty, no?
No, they're happy with the sixty zone. They want the camera to slow down the people that aren't respecting the sixty kilometer an hour zone. They're coming through there at eighty and ninety kilometers. I know, but that's, I I personally, I'm staying out of this debate for the most part tonight. I will come back next week with it, or next council meeting. This is council's, council's debate.
To keep the conversation going, uh I appreciate um councillor Grant's suggestion to defer. Uh I would be ready to vote on this, because I know where I stand on it. Um however, I could appreciate having some more information going to region and and hearing what Director Pupay uh can bring back to us. So I would be fine with either. Uh I'm gonna put it back in the hands of council.
Councillor Burgess?
Through you to Director Pupay. Um just so I'm clear on this motion. Ignore, focusing on only what's going to affect Woolwich Township roads, ones we control. The only thing we're doing is saying it will be reduced to forty kilometers an hour and maybe add flashing lights indicating it's a school zone, but the timing doesn't matter because it's not being reduced. And everything else is regional stuff. Is that correct?
Through you Chair Grant to councillor Burgess. So the timed enforcement uh is contrary to ASE currently, the way I understand it. And the flashing lights would be contrary as well. That's not a requirement uh per ASE right now. So those are the two items um that would be different than what was uh agreed to by area municipalities when we were rolling out ASE. Um and then the speed limit, obviously defining the speed limit is is council's um prerogative as well. Um but that, I think, is in flux as far as rural, but certainly in the urban. Uh they would be looking to uh to do a forty kilometers, far as I understand that. So I think there is a pause to Mayor Schatz's point about the rural speed. I think there's been some pause there with regional staff. Um and then the speed camera should not be used as a speed enforcement tool on regional township roads without prior consultation. That can be easily handled, I think, with reporting coming back to council, right? So I think that's an easy one there. Um i- i- and that was just the suggestion of what, if if we could get some information back to this council, maybe that could help address the first three. Um but the second, certainly the fourth one is is not a problem a- at all for for reporting. We just make that a a requirement that before we uh give our list to count uh to regional council or regional staff, sorry, to implement ASE, it would flow through uh a report to this council. That makes sense to me.
Councillor Burgess?
But again, on our roads owned by Woolwich Township, it says always forty in school zones, so we don't even need to worry about the time enforcement. Is that correct? Because everything else, I think, is listed here as a regional road.
I I can help with that maybe. I believe the motion only speaks to regional roads, because uh the township would be approving speed limits on our own roads.
So council, what do we want to do with this? Defer or what are we doing? Mr. Smith?
I I don't know if I can be helpful, but I'll try. Um I'm ready if if council wants to do some wordsmithing. Um I also heard a potential motion to defer, which if that was actually a motion being moved, I wasn't sure if that was what it was. Uh then I think we have to consider that first. A motion to defer takes precedent. Um I also heard potentially a request for staff to report back to council with some more information. Uh and I'm not sure if that was with the motion to defer or not, so sort of looking for I think uh councillor Grant uh has said she wanted to move a motion to defer.
That's correct, with the direction for staff to come back uh to report. I believe uh Mr. Pupay was gonna have a meeting with the regional staff. Um and I think that's a good opportunity to garner additional information and provide them with some of our feedback and concerns and see if regional staff have um any points that they'd like to raise.
Okay. Just want to clarify this. Nathan, you had seconded her motion, or did you second? No, do we have a second or for Kayla's motion? No? He'll second it. Okay, now questions. Mayor Schatz? Comments or whatever the case may be.
So I'm commenting on the original motion.
Sorry? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she just had it.
Because I know I'm out of order.
Okay, next step. What do we do?
It's it's a motion to defer, so really, there is no discussion on a motion to defer.
Mayor Schatz is correct.
Okay. Okay, we have a second or then I just call the vote. Okay, I'm going to call the vote on Kayla's motion. All in favor? Opposed? And and that's a tie, that would be a defeat, right? Two in favor, two opposed, and one non-vote.
So yes, the motion to defer would be defeated, which means the original motion is back.
Motion is back on the floor. Okay, now you can comment.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I have to remember what I was gonna say.
Confusion.
Um, two things. First of all, the motion that's here, if if we read it, we're getting caught up in one, two, three, and four, but it says now therefore be a result that the council of the township of Woolwich endorses the following principles for the rural speed strategy and direct township staff to advocate for these principles when meeting with regional staff, which is exactly what
What Jared?
What Jared is is saying he's going to do. So it's it's really just taking the motion and and implementing it to staff to do that. So I I I think maybe we're getting, maybe we're getting caught up. The second thing was in response to councillor Schwint's question about Kitchener. I believe that um Kitchener, so any regional roads in Kitchener would be subject to the regional speed enforcement if there's a school on it. Um the other roads, I believe they've opted out, correct, Eric?
Yeah, I think there's discussions ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so they've got this motion back on the floor. Do I have a mover and a second or? Mayor Schatz?
We had a mover, but I thought we had a edit by Mayor Schatz on number four. And I liked it.
Okay, do you want to?
I'll vote. Um I bring this up on the screen so we can see what we're talking about. Um what I've done for you is um you're just looking at the um sort of active clauses of the resolution. Uh I heard a comment that perhaps uh someone would want to change from seven AM to to five PM to seven AM to seven PM. Um maybe I can just do that with nods.
You've got seventy.
Seeing nods and thumbs, thumbs up.
There's seventy-five in there right now.
Okay, sorry, I will do that. Um I heard a comment that um either the second items stay as is, or it be changed to um speed limits be changed only after consultation with Woolwich Council. Um to, is, does the mover want to do that?
That was what I had commented on, if I may, Bonnie.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just hesitant dictating fifty or sixty. I understand the direction councillor Schwint is saying there and agree with it. Generally, it's just I don't wanna say if somebody wants a forty and it makes sense in one area that we're against it. Again, we're just providing direction. But I guess I just want to leave the door open, however that looks. I don't know if you have input there, councillor.
Well, if these are regional roads, we have no say on the speed limits on them anyway, do we? Mr. Pupay?
Well, I think uh maybe to help and thank you um Mayor Schatz for for that clarity and bringing us back. I think this is simply direction to us to advocate. So there would be reporting coming back. And if we were to advocate for any of these, then obviously in the reporting would be some decisions or um or commentary back. And and it is, they are regional jurisdictional roads, so they dictate uh speed limits. We can advocate, but they ultimately have the say. Um this council would have the say on local roads as far as what posted speed limits could be. But again, there would be reporting with information available, and this is direction for us to advocate for these principles. So I appreciate that. That gives some flexibility, obviously, and it's does certainly creates dialogue at the at the regional table.
Mayor Schatz?
I would also add at the end something about, excuse me, that there should be sent to regional staff or whatever the appropriate wording is to get it to uh to folks at the region.
Um so if I may, Madam Chair, um do we prefer the original wording uh from the uh from the resolution without the consultation piece, or or if you want to talk about that?
But number four?
Uh in number two, sorry.
Number two, sorry.
Uh the the section I highlighted here.
If I may, um Chair Bryant?
Yes, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yep, that's okay. I thought I just interject. I I agree with councillor Burgess. I would prefer not to have the fifties and sixty kilometer per hour. As I think if we're looking at this from the from the perspective of these are principles that we would like staff to advocate, I would think that if the data was to come back that on certain roads, the standard posting of fifty or sixty is not suitable. We don't want to curtail them by saying that this principle kind of paints them into the corner of advocating for those speeds. So I would agree that I would, I would rather just stay away from dictating a certain limit and instead look at it more from a macro lens, which would be that we would really prefer consultation to occur with the township before any final decision is made. I think that's the bigger crux of the issue, rather than what the specific speed limit may be.
Councillor Schwint?
Um yeah, looking at this, consultation is most important. That's kind of the highlight I would die on. It's this council should be consulted on things that affect our local community. I think we haven't maybe spoken up as much as we should in the past, and this is an opportunity for us to do that. The reason I pushed for including those numbers is it takes the onus off staff, because we know based on studies, we keep hearing about the forty kilometers is so much safer. They have to default that to that in their professional opinion. We also know the community doesn't necessarily always accept that. So we have to be able to push a little bit, and without having some sort of push in there, I'm afraid we're gonna go back and see forty kilometers an hour too often. But I do understand there needs to be ways to have both, because we need both in the township.
Just to comment, the forty kilometer an hour, though, they were within a an um a village setting, were they not? They were not just out in a country school on a country road. Yeah, but was that not in the village? Okay, just asking the question. Okay, no, fair enough. That's why I'm asking the question. I wasn't totally familiar with where those were. Okay, fair enough.
So Madam Chair, if I may, um
Yes.
Is the mover okay with uh changing it to consultation, or would council like to vote on an amendment?
Consultation is in the spirit.
If I keep going, I believe uh the mover was acceptable to um changing number four to be more positive rather than negative. Um and then I, if the mover is okay, and we'll add that this resolution be forwarded to regional council.
And council councils?
And re- and
It's out of the world.
And township councils.
Councillor Burgess?
Three comments, if I may, uh just on the one we're doing on number two there through you Chair. Do we want to keep the comments about forty kilometers an hour locally, or is that gone too? Because we deleted the regional road plus the local. That makes sense.
That was the line, while speed limits in front of school or residential streets be reduced to forty?
Yeah. Just because now we're totally ignoring the local stuff, so if that's what you prefer, I'm good with that, but wanted to point that out. Otherwise, we keep it as regional roads to consult with us. The rest is forty.
Forty's too. We don't want forty.
When urban, no, in our settings on our roads.
But this deals strictly with regional, does it not?
Right. But we deleted the part. Like originally, it was worded at the end, while speed limits in front of schools and residential streets can be reduced to forty kilometers an hour. Yeah, that part. So do we want to keep that part in, or no?
Mayor Schatz?
So I, I just, I think that reads that we're not asking for consultation in re- on residential streets.
But those are our streets.
Not all.
Yeah.
Like Arthur Street is residential, right? I would, I would think of Arthur, right? I would think of um, I would think of Winterburn as residential. I would think of Conestoga as residential.
And they're all regional roads. Because we have forty in Conestoga, we have forty in Winterburn.
Like in the
That's not meeting the intent.
But those two school zones are both forty, and they need to be forty, I think, where they are in Conestoga and Winterborne.
They are, yes.
Yeah.
In Amira, I'm not convinced.
Amira, I'll leave that up to the two reps for
Be fine taking that back out. I think that it, to me, makes more sense and reads better without adding in that extra, because it is asking for the consultation. Um I think that most of us around the table here would agree that if it's within town boundaries, right in front of a school on a residential street that doesn't see a lot of traffic, yeah, you're probably gonna want forty kilometers an hour. Um but we can do that. We don't need to embed that into this resolution.
I can follow up on the other two. Um point three there, on Woolwich-owned roads, we're not having a reduction during school hours, because it's just always forty. I think we chatted about, do we want the extra cost of flashing lights that still operate during school hours?
Let's be that. I may be very uh case-by-case basis. Example, I'll give Park Manor School forty all the time, kind of makes sense to me. That's what I'm division. On a township road, like three bridges, maybe flashlights make a lot more sense, even if it's twenty-four seven, but provide that visibility. That's just an example off the top of my head.
If I can interject, uh councillor Burgess makes a good point, though, because in number three, it's saying flashing lights at all of the locations in all school zones. So do we want to clarify that to be more on uh like country roads, uh rural roads?
Should it say regional rural roads? Because otherwise, that's opening it up for Woolwich, or do you want both?
It doesn't matter, we're directing regional stuff.
That's why I'm asking.
It's the reasoning of should be too, that just implies it may not happen. I'm fine with us using this as a point of avocation for uh staff to go to region with.
And then my last comment, if I may.
Go for it.
Uh number four there, um I guess to just your comment. To and to Director Pupay, if we're getting complaints like the area you commented on
Yeah.
and we want to get a camera, what does that look like? and we want to get a camera, what does that look like? Like right now, you have a list of priority, but if we want to supersede something or if we're just getting an allotment each year, can we have say on where it's going? Or kind of how is that going to play out?
To you Chair Bryant, to you Counselor Burgess. Yeah, yep, this council could direct wherever they wanted to put it in a school zone at any. They could jump priority. They could put the last priority if they wish. I think that's where we are with this right now. I think the important message that every school zone, at least that's how regional council directed their staff, was to receive ASE as quickly as possible.
So go ahead, Counselor Grant. Oh, sorry, finish up, Counselor Burgess first.
So we pass this motion tonight. The next speed camera that goes up, are you just going to move ahead with that, or is that going to come to us? Or kind of what's the next steps for our roads?
Yeah, through you Chair, it's the way this is, then we would write a report with our allocation and we would, staff would go through the priority ranking and have the highest, you know, top school zones on that report. We would put in the appendancy then all of our school zones. And then we would see council's endorsement for our recommendation or an alternate that council chooses.
Okay, Counselor Grant, you had comments?
I was just wondering if maybe instead of after consultation, I'm wondering if what may hit upon Counselor Burgess's kind of concerns is in in collaboration with Woolwich Council. So if we feel that one of these rural roads warrants a higher ranking than what's put in the report, that we can maybe supersede that, I don't know if that would maybe be better phrasing. And like collaboration and consultation with Woolwich Council.
Sorry, David, sorry.
Yeah, i- if I could, Madam Chair, I I think I think we're getting to a point where, you know, as some members have noted, this is this is an attempt to give your best advice to to Mr. Pupay. At the same time, what I think we had need to try and strike a balance is you need to provide enough direction where he can still sit at the table with the other township reps and not feel like he doesn't really need to be there because it's so prescriptive in nature that that the strategy's kind of been written by council, right? So again, I just provide that feedback that I think the goal was to provide input and direction so that staff can take some guidance back, but at the still still at the same time, provide enough flexibility that I again, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the goal, I didn't seem to sense that, you know, Mr. Pupay was was there then under very prescriptive guidelines, because then you might question why he's there at the table. Again, just something food for thought.
Okay, counsel, where are we going with this now?
Madam Chair, if it helps.
Please.
We've we've done some wordsmithing. If everyone is generally supportive of this motion, you, this is a committee of the whole section of the agenda, so we could, you know, if if counsel's supportive, we could pass this tonight. You could have your sober second thought and sort of digest all this and come back. And if there's any further questions or comments, we could deal with that at council next, sorry, in two weeks.
Counsel in agreement with that? Yeah. Okay, then let's ask the question. Moved by Counselor Schmidt. Do I have a second or to move this one? Counselor Cado? Any further questions, comments? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? And that would be carried. Okay, so we can come back to that in two weeks. Mr. Pupay will know what to do with it at that point. Does that make it clear enough?
No, you can't tell us that, Jared.
Okay, moving on.
We're getting giddy. It's getting late. It's getting late.
Okay, so we have any mayor report on regional matters, anything?
I would only highlight, since we just had this long discussion, that the last item on the report talks about expanding community safety zones and that there were some new designated zones. It's not listed here, but there are some in in Woolwich. I did confirm with regional staff that those are just community safety zones and not speed cameras or ASE zones currently. So all school areas will become community safety zones. Do I have that right?
Yeah, it's just a matter of timing.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Mayor Shont's?
No, I think I'll leave the rest for your pleasure of reading.
Okay, sounds good. Counsel reports or updates? None. Outstanding activity list. Anybody have anything for that? No? Items pulled from the information package? None. Items for information or public knowledge, public notices, none? Well, that brings us to the end of the regular meeting of council. On behalf of council, we thank all those who watched here or at home, and we sincerely appreciate all those who took the time to participate tonight. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Counselor Burgess, a second or anybody? Counselor Cado, all in favor? And that's carried. Good night, everyone. Have a good one.